Pastor Bone from Central Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we are most grateful to you for your kindness that you've shown toward us. We're grateful for the privilege of living in such a beautiful community as Vero Beach. Entire Indian River County, we thank you for its citizens. We pray that during this council meeting that you would give wisdom and grace and that you'd give guidance in all things according to the affairs of our community. We bless Vero Beach and we pray, Lord, that you would give it your great peace and God should give us guidance in all things. We love you and grateful for the opportunity. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor Bone. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
On the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is with us stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, freedom, and justice for all.
Tammy, would you call roll please?
Dr. Zedans.
Here.
Colonel Young.
Here.
Councilwoman Moss.
President.
Vice Mayor Sykes.
President.
Mayor Howell.
President.
Approval of minutes. Does anybody have any alternate operations to last meeting's minutes? Motion for approval?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The, hang on, why did I lose my space here? Okay. The agenda additions and deletions and adoptions of the agenda, I know we have some changes on that.
Yes, Mayor, staff has some changes. We would like to pull item 3E, which is under the consent agenda, off of the agenda tonight.
3E, did you say?
3E, yes, sir.
3E.
And then add, under the FPL agreements, we're going to have actually 18 and 19. 18 is going to be the waiver and release agreement and 19 is going to be the street lighting agreement. And you have both of them in front of you.
Any other changes? Hearing none. Like to hear motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. It appears we have no proclamations this evening and no consultants, so we're going to move straight on to item 1. This is Mr. Nat Dolliner of Carlton Fields to discuss all of these items, 1 through 19.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was heading up here and you kind of approved the minutes before I got a chance to get to the podium, but there's a question that I have with regard to the minutes of the special call meeting.
Okay, for tonight or?
Right, the minutes that you approved for the special call meeting, I have a question on that because you took a, a motion was made by Lang and the second, by whoever, anyway, and approved by the council. Prior to going into your special call meeting, you stated for the public that you were going to come back, that there was going to be no discussion, there would be no votes, and you made that pretty clear before you went into special call. So if you're going to make a motion and you're going to vote, the public needs notice. And I would argue that you didn't have the legal authority to make a motion to approve your discussions in the back room without giving public notice. And you specifically said you were not going to do that and members of the public left.
I'm sure any of that sounds familiar.
Well, ask Tammy, she's got a pretty good memory.
Well, let's do, let's do this. Since we started a new meeting and since we have public comment, why don't you wait and we'll bring it back up?
Well, because you're going to make me do that and waste my three minutes. The, I mean, it's, you can ask your city attorney, you can ask your city clerk. You took a vote on something that you said you were not going to take a vote on without public notice. I don't think you have the legal authority to do that, which has an impact on other things that you're going to discuss during this meeting.
Wait, did we?
I don't remember any of that statement like that. I'd have to obviously go back and hear the verbatim record of that open part of the meeting. I mean, you announced what we typically announce and it says at the conclusion of the closed attorney's client section, this public meeting will be reopened. And that's what we did.
Did we reopen, we did reopen the meeting?
Sure.
Right.
I can, I can play for you because I don't usually do that, but I was here and I videotaped on my phone that portion of the meeting and that's exactly what you did. And I'd be happy to play it for you.
Well, that would be highly unusual at this point in time. Of course, you know, we do have other.
Well, it's highly unusual that you make a motion and vote on something without public notice.
I'm not sure that's the case.
So what I suggest maybe is we hold off on approving those minutes for now, since that's his issue. And can we do that? Can we hold off on approving the minutes and we'll, then we'll come back and address that? Because if we said something, if we did something wrong, we would like to fix it.
Right, yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so the minutes of the special call meeting then are not approved.
That's, that's, I think, what we're proposing.
Well, you already passed a motion to approve them.
We did.
I think you need a motion now to basically disapprove that was at this time and, and bring it back later.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to unapprove the minutes from the special call meeting.
On November 27th.
On November 27th and revisit that at a later date. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hedy.
Thank you.
Now, where were we? Mr. Dolliner?
Mr. Dolliner, there he is, okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Good afternoon, members of council and staff. I'm Nathaniel Dolliner from the Carlton Fields Law Firm in Tampa. First of all, I want to thank you very much for the honor and privilege of Carlton Fields representing the city in this exciting transaction. I know it's been discussed for decades and we are scheduled now to close the transaction on Monday, next Monday, December the 17th. And so what you have in your packet are a variety of documents, about 19 of them, that are closing documents that are necessary in order to close the transaction. Many of these were included in draft form, drafts that were attached to the asset purchase agreement which you approved in October of 2017. Some of them needed to be updated as negotiations continued on fine tuning and so forth. There were some that were not attached to the package, such as the memorandum of lease for Substation 6 or memorandum of lease for the airport warehouse lease. Those are standard documents that are recorded in the public records. There are also some agreements with the East Coast Railway regarding communications and so forth that has been done. A pole attachment agreement regarding the fiber optic. There was a need for a First Amendment to a consortium agreement. When the parties after closing, the consortium members are going to do a study to figure out who owns what portions of the fiber optic and there's a cost allocation to that. And there's also a waiver and release agreement that has been added to your agenda with regard to FMPA and the final documents that we need for FMPA. So those are what are before you, in your packet. I would also just mention, and Jim, I don't know whether you prefer to go through the, the numbers of the transaction, but the only thing I would say is that the payment going to FMPA is now 105,400,000 because we're closing in December instead of October. So there was a sliding scale, as you may recall, in the asset purchase agreement depending on when the transaction closed. So those are the documents that are before you. There are 19 for your approval, which are closing documents. We've been doing a lot of signing. I haven't, but the mayor and Jim and Tammy and Wayne have been doing a lot of signing this afternoon and we appreciate their help throughout the process.
One of the documents that's very important, especially to my heart, is the closing document where it talks about the, where the money's going to go at the end of the day. And it is a $185 million project that we're closing on here. There was a reduction of 2.6 million to Florida Power and Light because we closed later than the October the 1st. And so the debt service payments from FMPA were reduced by that 2.6. So the net purchase price, after it all washes out, is $183,903.622, subject to change over 24 hours depending on interest rates and other issues that are there. But that is the closing statement to give you for the disbursements. Payment to FMPA will be 105,400,000. Payment to OUC, 20 million. And payoff of the bonds that we have is $15,208,13. And again, these are the numbers that are put into the project itself. At the end of the day, the city's payment backed up is somewhere in the neighborhood of $42 million. That will include 6.9 that goes to the pension plan for the electrical employees.
Okay. Well, Mr. Doll, we certainly appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put forth and appreciate your updates. Council have anything for Mr. Dolliner?
Just having looked through, looked through the pages upon pages for the, for the documents there, it is a, it's a Herculean effort and I appreciate that I knew it would be a Herculean effort at the onset. And I think it's a watershed, it's a watershed event for sure, but.
I just want to thank Mr. Dolliner for everything he's done, for his diligence and working with us and being extremely professional and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I might, just very quickly, I would like to acknowledge Mike Walls, one of my law partners, who's worked so hard on the regulatory side, Dan DeCubelis, who's outside getting some documents signed on the real estate side. The council members, again, I thank you so much. And it's also been a joy working with Jim O'Connor and Wayne and Tammy and Cindy and the rest of the staff. It just Ted, everybody's been great. And as I mentioned to Councilwoman Moss earlier today, it really is a team effort. And we thank you again for the honor and the privilege.
And thank you, sir.
Thank you. And having worked very closely with Carlton Fields, you may recall, when I became mayor, we didn't actually have an attorney for months. After Mr. Wright was gone, we deliberately waited several months before engaging the services of Carlton Fields. And I have to commend them. They really hit the ground running. You know, we saved that money for several months not having an attorney while we were straightening out technical issues that needed to be decided. So that money was saved, but they were, they really were wonderful in terms of getting right to work. Roll up the sleeves and get right to work. Did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Also, one other thing, Jackie Swigler, who's stayed back in our Tampa office, has just been an incredibly instrumental part of our team. And I just wanted to mention her. She was here at one of the meetings back in October when the council approved the APA.
Absolutely. A big group effort. And thank you, Mr. Walls, Mr. Cubelis. Thank you both. And thanks for the rest of the staff that's helped us along the way.
You can, you can see from, anyone who's looking at an agenda, you can see how many items there are. And I'll just say right now, as I actually is looking at them, number 14, which says pole attachment, that's not the pole attachment. That's actually the final, the draft closing agreement. The last several items, if you, if you go to click on them, if you go to the hyperlink, you just have to look around a little bit. It was just, although it was a little confusion in terms of the, the hyperlinks. It's, that's, 14 is not the pole attachment. It's the, it's actually number 17, the draft closing agreement. But you'll see if you look at the hyperlinks. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor, just another comment. From all the proposals over the last seven and a half, eight years that I've been working on this project, financially for the city, this is the best project or the best proposal we've had. And I do appreciate the mayor's and Mayor Moss was there when we had to run some hard front lines there with FPNL. But I think at the end of the day, it all has worked out to the benefit of both parties. And we got a very fair price per meter, which is in the electric utility business, is how it's typically measured. And at the end of the day, the amount of money we have left over, I think, is very fair price.
I concur. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you, Jim. Thank you for your role.
Thank you.
So. Real quick, I don't want to let the good attorney leave without just acknowledging again, some of the incredible work that was done because I don't think most of us realize the number of various agreements that are necessary. I mean, it seems to be a pretty straightforward thing until you start going into the details of it. And if you look at it, we have everything from the fiber optic agreement that entails the school district to the, the number of rail line crossings associated with, with the electrical. And you know, I'm, having looked at, you know, each one of these things, I think clearly it's something that needed the level of expertise that you brought into it. Otherwise, I can't imagine that it would have been successful. And it's been an education. And again, applaud you for the work that went into it. The, you know, anyway, the substations right on down the line is pretty amazing. So again, thank you. Thank you, Colonel Young.
Mayor, if I may, we will need approval of these. And this is just some of the documents. You've already approved a lot of documents. These, just like everything else, are subject still to some tweaking before closing and final execution or recording. So.
So do we, do we simply need a motion or?
And you're taking action, so you will need to open a public comment.
Okay. Well, before we then, thank you.
But one thing, please, to Wayne's point, it would be great to have the motion acknowledge that there may be still some changes as may be approved by the mayor or Jim, you know, because we're still, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Okay, that's great. So before we make a motion then, let's have a public comment on this matter. So any public comment on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, when we have public comment, in case somebody questions what we're going to do, these will be immaterial type of changes. But to give you an example of some of the things that are still up in the air, the OPGew, which is the grounding, and it's up in the electrical part of the system. We are still discussing transferring that to FPNL. We have a provision in our contract about exposure to the city of $500,000 for environmental impact. We are still talking to FPNL, reducing that to 250, but we would put it in escrow upfront as opposed to waiting after the closing and if something's found. So we've got that type of tweaking that is going to take place. It will not change, for example, how much is transferred to FMPA. That's, those are set numbers.
The one other potentially substantive issue, we have one substation where the city has a water pumping station, we came to realize, and we're working right now with potentially, instead of taking an easement, we would just retain ownership of that small plot of land instead of it going with the substation. So there's, there is a little bit of fine tuning song, as, as Mr. Dolliner said, included in our motion that the mayor and the city manager are able to agree to those, those changes.
Certainly. So let's have, we'll have public comment on this item first and then we'll have a motion.
Hello, council members. Brian Hedy, Vero Beach, Florida. I'm going to run for president for 2020. At several meetings over the past several years, I have asked for documents on dollar amounts. And you can go back and review the November 20th meeting in which steadfastly, once again, refused to give any dollar amounts. And I asked, where's the money going? And today's meeting, you give some numbers out. On the 27th, there was 186 million. It's gone down to 183 million. The $20 million payment to OUC, can any council member tell me what that payment's for? No. Okay. You would think that if there was $20 million going out, you would know what it was for. There's $105 million going out to FMPA. Can any council member give me some reason why we should pay FMPA 105-plus million dollars of the city residents' money? You're selling a city asset. That money belongs to the city residents. Some would argue it belongs to the ratepayers, whichever. It's 183 million dollars, or 105 million dollars. And I think that it's reasonable that the taxpayers in our community be given some explanation. You've already refused to give me any explanation on the 20, 105, same thing. Anybody, any council member want to venture?
My, my understanding was that, that that was what they were upside down on hedge contracts for long-term power purchases. So that's my understanding.
Okay, so 105 million dollars, we are going, we city residents, the people of our community are going to pay to FMPA because they're upside down in an agreement that they made with somebody?
No, no. We, the city made that, the city in the past made that agreement with FMPA to buy future contracts. I read your book, by the way. You talked about this million-dollar contract or 100 million dollars of electric for 20 years, a $2 billion electric contract? Yeah. So there was a very, it was a very, they got, it was a city council who probably should never have made that electric deal in the past. And they ended up 105, 105 upside down on the one deal and 20 million upside down on the other deal. And that's, that's why government should not be in the electric business. And that's why we're, this city council is actually getting our city out of the government, out of the electric business.
I would just assume the city get out of the electric business. I don't have a problem with the city getting out of the electric business. But the upside down part and the contract you're talking about, and if you read the book, that agreement was made by a 2008 council. And after extensive research, I uncovered that the council members didn't know some of the clauses because they were redacted, because they were never told, whatever, and because the documents were changed after the fact. The original contract went to Boston. The city clerk was never given a copy of the contract, which is a requirement of law that city documents be kept here at City Hall. And the only copy, the city attorney didn't have it, the city manager didn't have it. And it was subsequently decided that the contract was invalid because of the changed wording in the contract, which you could see when you compared the redacted copy with, that was available. The redacted copy was available in 2008. When a unredacted copy became available, when I got elected in 2009, I compared the two and found the differences. Based on those differences, that contract was thrown out. So if what you're basing this 105 million dollars on a contract, it was subsequently voided.
I'm just telling you what my understanding of what that money is.
Mr. Zedans, I understand that you're understanding, but if you're being told something that's not accurate and 105 million of our dollars, the taxpayers' dollars, the community's dollars, 105 million dollars is being handed out on a contract that was deemed to be invalid, then, you know, why would you do that?
Thank you, Mr. Hedy. Your time's up.
Well, my time's up, but my answers are still.
Your time's up.
My time's up.
Time's up, three minutes.
So you don't want to answer. You just want to give 105 million of our dollars away without a valid reason? You want to give 105 million dollars away?
No, sir.
No?
I would appreciate it if you just sat down. Your time's up.
Okay, but you're going to give 105 million dollars away without a valid reason? If the contract was deemed to be invalid?
If you want to be called out of order, I can do that.
Well, you can call me out of order, but I don't think it's out of order for the community to have an answer where you're giving a hundred, it's not your money. That 105 million is not your money. It's our money. It's our collective money.
I understand that.
Well, if you understand that, then tell me why you're giving it away.
I also understand that you're now out of order.
I'm out of order for asking that question and you're not going to give the answer. And you continue to not give the answer.
We'll help you sit down, Mr. Hedy. Any other public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Well, we're going to.
What do we do?
So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept these 19 documents as proposed so long as we understand there will be some minor changes to the final verbiage, subject to the approval of the mayor and the city manager.
So that's 19 documents?
Correct.
We're adding the other two to it.
I'll second that.
They were added, right.
We have 19 documents.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We own a present, presentations, items. We're going to have Mr. John Michael Matthews, Chairman of the Veterans.
Memorial Island Committee.
Chairman of the Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Committee to present their annual report. This is sponsored by Councilmember Tony Young. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm John Matthews, John Michael Matthews, and I'm here to make the annual report of the Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Committee. We're currently operating with a full board of five members and two alternates. And I believe you've all received the written report, so I'll just, it looks like there's a lot of activity tonight, so I'll just give a quick summary. First of all, the island's in great shape and everyone seems to love it. The largest events held on the island each year are Memorial Day Ceremony in May and Veterans Day Ceremony in November. This year, due to bad weather, the Memorial Day Ceremony was moved to the Performing Arts Center at the Vero Beach High School, which I think is the first time any ceremony or, or service has been canceled due to bad weather in 25 some odd years that I've been involved. So we're doing good in that area. The Veterans Day Ceremony was held last month with the traditional sights, sounds, and symbols that we're used to. The latest addition to the sanctuary is the Gold Star Grove, and it has a plaque near the cenotaphs. And of course, the Gold Star families are those that have lost a family member in the service of our country. Other ceremonies held on the island include the annual Indian River County Victims Rights Coalition vigil, a tribute to the end of the Korean War, a POW/MIA remembrance ceremony, memorial services for Vietnam veteran Jeff Flannery and John Wilson, and a ceremony awarding the Purple Heart to Charles Vigilante for wounds he received almost 50 years ago in Vietnam. In addition to these ceremonies, there were other types, a few other types. The Next Generation Veterans held a ruck march, which was to raise awareness to the, to those with post-traumatic stress disorder. And it started and ended on the island. And each participant carried 15 to 20 pounds of food, which we donated to a food bank. And the second ruck march, which by the way, a ruck is a rucksack, is a pack, which most people would think of as a pack. But the second ruck march, which actually turned out to be kind of a ruck run, I didn't realize that when I decided to join in with those young veterans. But this was to raise awareness for the Words from War Monument that's to the veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, which will be placed just outside of the island. And then in November, we had the Alzheimer-Parkinson Association, their annual walk to remember. And that, and the island was part of their route. Then we had one other thing, and I just noticed on the, on the agenda that Rick, Mr. Lewis, will be coming up with a wreath across America. will be coming up with a wreath across America. That was the last thing. So we're grateful for the guidance and dedication and help from Mr. Don Dexter from the Public Works Department, Ms. Nanette Haynes and her crew for the meticulous maintenance of the island, and of course, Rob Slezak and his staff. And I'd like to thank the city clerk, Tammy Bersik, and Rita Hawkins. Their efforts are vital for the operation of our committee. And I'd like to thank the city council. It's, it's great to be in a city where, where the council holds the veterans in such high regard, and I'm proud to serve on Memorial Island. It's, it's an honor. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I've ever been in a city before. Granted, I haven't lived a whole lot of places, but I've certainly visited a lot of places. I'm not sure there's a whole lot of places in the country that does so much as we do thanks to folks like you for our veterans. And so we all, I know we all appreciate it.
Well, I'm proud to do it, and the island is a wonderful spot to honor veterans.
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you very much.
I did the same thing. I really have never seen such a great place like that island. And I'm also very excited about the next-gen monument that hopefully will be going up in the next year or so.
It, like our POW/MIA monument, will be a regional monument, not just for our community, but for the whole area, so.
I asked John to come and highlight the annual report for Memorial Island because I think the visibility, the more people who understand about the island, the better. And you really can't get a grasp until you walk the island and you see the dolphins that are teaching their young to fish in the cove, or you look on the memorials that are, there are 78 of them, and you see the fact that you have people that are still recognizing the loss of a loved one. And then with the Gold Star Grove, the newest plaque that was put there, shortly afterwards, I walked onto the island and I saw that there was a wristwatch left and a half of a consumed beer can. And for those who are on the inside loop, often if you'll go to Arlington to the newest section where all of the Afghan and Iraq veterans are there, there are troops that come back that were in combat with them, and they knew that they liked Jack Daniels, so they'll leave a bottle or beer can. So take the opportunity and just see how much it touches the community, because the staff has done a phenomenal job, and the support of the community is just incredible. And hopefully, you know, we can sustain it. And I think the, the next-gen monument out front has paid dividends as well, so hopefully we'll carry on.
The memorial, the sanctuary is kind of our Arlington here, isn't it? It's, in a way, if you think of it that way, so.
Thanks, John.
I know you've got a lot of things today, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation is Mr. Richard Lewis to speak of on wreaths across America, and that's sponsored by Councilmember Tony Young.
My name is Rick Lewis. Yeah, good evening. My name's Rick Lewis, and we're here today to give you an update on wreaths across America. You may remember back about 10 or 11 months ago, myself and Joe Crowley came in front of you to ask permission to start a program that was originally began at Arlington National Cemetery to honor, remember the people who served by placing wreaths on their graves over the Christmas holiday. We gave us permission, we've done this. Memorial Island Commission has also let us sponsor that site. We have at this time raised over 900 wreaths for this year to be placed out at the sites so that we can remember these individuals who served and held our freedoms in their hands. What we would like to do at this time also is make sure that we know that everybody in Vero, this council, is all invited to come out to join us Saturday, the 15th, for wreath day, to lay wreaths, and then come to the island for a ceremony to be held at noon, which corresponds with the ceremony that is done at Arlington National Cemetery. So right now, I'd like to turn this over to Joe to allow him to tell you a little bit more about the ceremony, this plan for Saturday. And we really need to thank him, because without him, this would not have been brought to Indian River County. This was him and his wife's idea. I was introduced to them through work, and they've allowed me to help them bring this here, and it's been, been a pretty interesting year, actually, to do this, quite honestly. So, Joe?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us back again. I like how he says he just joined in, helped along. Rick was a leader through this whole event, all this fundraising. Again, at 10:30 this Saturday, Crest Lawn Cemetery, we will begin. We'll be laying nearly 800 wreaths on the veterans' graves there. At that point, we will then go over to the island, and we will lay the wreaths for the 78 there, as well as ceremonial service wreaths for the branches of the service. And those will be placed later on at the markers on the island. The ceremony is going to be led by a gentleman, you may have heard of him, Colonel Young. He's going to lead us. So it's, it's an honor to have you joining us. He was there right from the start with us as well. All the money raised for this event was from Indian River County Vero Beach residents, Sebastian, but the county area to donate. It was businesses, it was residents, and it was just over $10,000. So coming from Massachusetts and doing this up there and having a chance to start it here and see the community jump on board like they did is amazing, and next year is going to be even better, and we are looking forward to it. But please, we have a lot of wreaths to place. The more the merrier. This is a great event. Children are welcome. It's a great way to teach them about the sacrifice that our soldiers have made. So we'd love to see families here. It just, it brings it all together, and it's really good for the holiday spirit. So again, thank you very much for all your support, and we look forward to seeing you Saturday.
And remind, and thank you very much. Remind everyone how they can participate, the cost that is involved, and just, you know.
To participate, you do not need to do anything but show up at 10:30. The wreaths will be waiting there. In the future, for next year, we'll be, we'll be soliciting again for the wreaths, but for this year, please just show up at, we will start 10:30 sharp, so we would like people to be there for at least 10:15. But there is no cost involved. The work has been done, the donors have given, and we are ready to go.
Right.
Where are the wreaths coming from?
They are coming from Maine. They are on a truck right now. We just got our email confirming, and they'll be here in plenty of time, Friday afternoon.
And who do you have helping right now? Do you have the Cub Scout, Boy Scouts?
We have asked for Cub Scout help. I know that we have a troop going to help us. We did reach out to a couple other troops. There is a Girl Scout troop as well. So obviously, any groups like that, if they're still out there and they want to come, please bring your groups, athletic teams, the Legion Riders are going to be taking part. The Legion Post 39 has been huge in this. I mean, we will say they're one of our biggest supporters going through as well.
So Crest Lawn at 10:15 on Saturday.
That's it. That's where we want to see, love to see 200, 300, 400 people.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I have been in contact with the Gulfstream Council, who runs the Boy Scouts around through here. I was on the phone this afternoon with David Katz from down there, and he is at this time working to try to get us a couple troops in here. So we will hopefully have some, a little help in there.
Cool. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a third presentation here from Mr. Keith Drewett. It's written, "Business Plan for Moving Forward with the City of Vero Beach, Keeping the Marina and Improving Its Condition," and it's sponsored by Councilmember Tony. Tony, you're all over it tonight. Councilmember Tony Young.
It's a Christmas gift.
And by the way, I also have the marina under city council matters, old business, so we can combine them if you wish. These are just points of information. I don't need to talk about them, but if anybody else wants to, that's all, that's all I'm saying. In the interest of being efficient, since we have a long agenda.
Save them for later.
We'll hear from Mr. Drewett first, of course.
Yeah, we've already, we've already changed the agenda. Let's just leave it like it is.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's good to be here. I had planned to do this with the visual aids, which are not available. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to cut me a little slack with your stopwatch, if you wouldn't mind. It's going to take a little longer than I thought. Can you do that?
We'll give you a few more minutes.
Thank you. You've got a full set of documents in your packets. The audience, I think, have some handouts with six slides. They're microtype, so I hope you can read them. I'm a retired executive, Vero Beach resident, live on Eugenia Road. I'm a 35-year recreational boater, and my business career had significant experience in turnaround and failing businesses. I'm here tonight to talk about a business case for the city to continue to run the marina directly under its own control. Not a business plan, that's a much more extensive document. This is more like a sort of highlights or sketch of what a business plan might look like to some of the key issues. So you go to slide one. I'm really asking that the city make a serious effort over a period of two years to fix the problems of the marina and make it the jewel of the city that it once was, a two-year effort. The current situation is, we actually have a pretty profitable business. After we pay off the debt service, we're going to make $435,000 a year operating income at the marina. That's a 26% operating margin. That's pretty extraordinary. You tell me, Apple's, Apple Computer's operating margin is 21%. Microsoft's is 20%, and Warren Buffett, Berkshire Hathaway, his operating margin is 11%. So we have a pretty good business here, even though it needs a little bit of fixing up. We seem to have very low forecast for future revenues, only 1% growth. Don't understand that. We're heading for a 3% inflation environment. So I'm thinking we need to begin to think in terms of growing revenue in the range of 3% to 5% a year, which would be more normal for this type of business. If we do that with the effect of compounding over five years, that's $1 million more profit than the current forecast. A big problem with the marina, I don't know how many council members or members of the audience have been around there, is deferred maintenance and just a lot of trash everywhere. Bicycles, kayaks, rusting trailers, buildings that need repair, generally pretty sore state. You've got to realize that the marina is not a, not a public monopoly. It operates in a competitive environment. Sun Tech's Grand Harbor to the north has built new slips, renovating their facilities. Harbor Towns to the south has always been a very well-run marina. I was there on my boat a couple of days ago, jam-packed full. There's a new marina at the inlet called Causeway Cove. 290, 290 new slips and moorings. So this, this is a competitive environment, and the city needs to understand that. So next slide, let's think about a short-term action plan. We know that Tim is leaving us. I think he's been a grave servant. He's a super guy. I wish him well. We do need a new marina director. I think that may take, you know, a contract, because you're asking someone to come into a very difficult environment, a rundown business, a lot of turmoil about what the future direction is, but that's up to you to decide. But I think we need someone with both marina and business experience, because there are business issues here as well as marina issues that need to be addressed. You've, I think, already committed or talked about paying off the $3.3 million debt on the marina. That's exactly the right decision. I commend you for it. That's really a busted transaction from many years ago. Can't make it better. So I think you're right to stand up to it and pay down the debt and get it behind you from the electric proceeds. Great decision. I think we need a crash program three months, six months, a year, to really make big improvements in a very short period of time. And I'm suggesting that you allocate $100,000 of additional operating expense to the marina to begin to address these problems in a very serious way. We're going to have 500, 700 boats coming through here in the next five months. It's the season. And these people all block. These people all post on message boards. They live virtually. They're living on their boats. So everybody knows what's going on. It's very important that the word goes out that the marina is on the up, is being renovated, and things are going to get better. That's one of the reasons, one of the recommendations, is that you need first-class Wi-Fi. These people are really, literally living their lives on Wi-Fi. Their medical appointments, their banking, their social contacts with their family. So we've got to have first-class Wi-Fi in the marina. And we need a new freestanding website. The current website just doesn't hack it and is buried inside the city website. So you have to go to the city Vero website, then go to the marina website. And by the way, you cannot make a reservation on the website. So a lot of stuff needs to get done. And then we need to get in some basic marketing, email marketing lists, e-newsletters, blogs, and so on. Next slide. A further suggestion is to use the resources in the community much more. There are a lot of talented people in this community that have got good business experience and good boating experience. And my understanding here is there's not a lot of institutional knowledge in the council or in the administration about marinas and boating. There are people around here that understand this stuff and understand business, and I think they can bring a lot to bear if you'll give them the opportunity. I've talked about the $100,000 operating funds. I'd also like to propose that you take some of the liquid proceeds from the electric sale, which I understand will be on deposit at a very low interest rate because of restrictions on the type of investment you can have, and commit to a $2 million revolving line of credit for capital improvements in the marina. That's not, so you're going to spend the money, just you're going to commit to the $2 million line of credit as and when projects are approved by the council, after review by, by city staff. Since it's a revolving line of credit, it's a very standard thing to do. We need to do a pricing analysis pretty quickly. Do we have any pricing power? Can we raise prices without impacting volume? That needs to be done. And we need to start to look at the financials of some of the expansion programs that have been proposed, do them in a thoughtful way, in an environmentally sensitive way, such as the lengthening of the T-Dock, small boats, small boats in the Northeast Lagoon. I just did a very quick business case example at the bottom of the slide. The payback is really tremendous. There is no better investment that the city can make with its funds than to invest in the marina, because the returns will be there. And as I said, council gets to approve these on a case-by-case basis, as with any capital project for the city. On the next slide, put together a little way of looking at the comparison of the various options that have been proposed. City-managed, management contract, long-term lease, a little ranking and scoring program to try and understand which is the most advantageous. I think the city comes out on top with the numbers in the red oval. Couple of places where the city doesn't do too well is the need for capital. Under one of the proposals, under the lease proposal, the capital would be provided by the lessor. But we have capital now. We have the, we have the utility sale, so we've got a little bit of spare capital. And access to experts, I think that can be fixed within the community. So the city, I think, could put out this $2 million. It would never be more than that under revolving credit line. It can never be more than $2 million. As your credit line gets paid down, then the money can be spent and the interest can be paid. So once you spend the first $2 million, it's pay-as-you-go. If you don't earn it, you can't spend it. It's capped at $2 million. So in summary, the marina's a great business. It's a terrific maritime gateway to Vero Beach. We pay off the debt as planned. Great decision. Authorize $100,000 to accelerate the cleanup and renovation. We hire a dynamic leader with both business and marina credentials. We leverage the talent and energy in the city to provide advice and expertise, and we set up a $2 million credit line to be spent as authorized by the... And we set up a $2 million credit line to be spent as authorized by the city. Nine minutes and 50 seconds. I'm done. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Appreciate it.
Questions?
Just a quick comment. Really appreciate the time you took to put this together. I've read through it a couple of times and certainly love to meet on a one-on-one basis with you.
Sean, any time.
You know, we've spent a lot of time on this topic, and I think there's unanimity that we need to make change. And so, that's why I wanted you to come here, so that we could have the opportunity to look at this proposal and take advantage of your recommendations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, I'd just add that, you know, we are exploring all of these options so that we can have all the information necessary to make the best decision for the citizens here. And so, I think this is a fantastic proposal and certainly worth some serious consideration.
I've already stated publicly at the last meeting that I'm in favor of the city maintaining control of the marina. I think, I don't think you were at that meeting, but the video, the videos are available as part of this agenda. And I do appreciate the effort that went into this. I think it's a good start. Thank you very much.
Mr. Drewitt, if it's not too complicated of an item, just how did you come up with your ranking system?
It's my ranking system. I got to do the presentation, so I get to choose the right. I like to think it's fairly objective, but, you know, I could be accused of bias. I've tried to approach this in a dispassionate way, but I'm in favor of the city continuing to run the marina. I think you can do a great job with the right leadership. And, you know, you can take the form of filling your own numbers if you wish and come to a different conclusion.
I think that was a financial.
I just want to say, I appreciate you doing it, too. And I think that you have to look at what the alternatives are when you're, if we are talking about doing a lease or a management contract. The status quo was never an option. I don't think anyone up here thought the status quo was an option, but the question is, what can the city do? And does the city want to get deeper into a business? Or does the city not want to do that? I have my own opinions, but if we are going to get deeper into this, if we are going to fix it up, this is an excellent plan. I had one question about your, about the fine grant issue, because that is relevant to what we discuss in the future, is if the city still owns the, so we have existing fine grants in that marina, and that's why the marina cannot be sold during the term of, there's like a term limit on that. So, my question, my question is along the lines is, why would we not be able to get additional fine grants in the future as long as the city still owned it, even if it was under a long-term lease or a management contract?
FINE will not fund a private entity, and if you have a lease, the private entity's in charge and operating it for profit.
What about if it's in a management agreement?
If it's a management agreement, it's different. Then we would be eligible, because the only thing we'd be doing is hiring a managing team and be under the control and the operation of the city, i.e. that they cannot make capital investments without our.
Jim, if I've talked to FINE about this, and Jim is correct, under a lease, the grants are gone, and you may indeed have to repay the grants back to FINE, or that's often waived, but that's still certainly in the contract, as I recall. That's correct. Under a management agreement, FINE would insist with their lawyers that the terms in the grants, which they regard as being important, are transported into the lease, into the management agreement, and they would control that. And the advantage of the city, it's a cleaner situation. There are no contracts, no leases. You know who's in charge. There's no middle layer in between. So, I think it's a much cleaner operating environment with the city in charge, no conflicting objectives. You get all the profits. You get all the increase in profits. You're not sharing them. So, these are considerations that you need to take into account.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. As I said, I was in favor of that from the start, but we, the council did request an RFP at the last meeting, and could the city manager please address the timeframe on that?
It'll be after the first of the year before we'll have that completed. As everybody knows, we're in the process of moving the warehouse, vacating the warehouse, which is where the purchasing department is. They will be located here in City Hall. And in that exercise, it's taken a considerable amount of time to do it. And to draw up this RFP is one thing to draw it up. The other is to make contacts with various companies and see if we make sure that we strike up an industry, because you just can't run the ad in the newspaper and expect people to come out. And so, we will be touching base with somewhere in the neighborhood of 24 different firms that we've identified.
So, I mean, it's not something that's going to come back to us right away.
Oh, no, ma'am.
That's fair to say. I mean, we're a couple of months out on it.
We'll put it out on the street for 45 to 60 days, you know, for the response, because people are going to have to spend a lot of time, especially new. Now, we have two proposals, obviously are very familiar with the, with our marina, but we would hope to encourage others.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And also, just for information, we have advertised for a marina director. I have about seven resumes that have come in, and we're still going through that.
And would, as far as the director, would it be helpful, I mean, to turn to Keith and maybe some of the recommendations you might have to assist the city manager?
Jim knows how to get a hold of memos available to help.
Very good.
Did you put in an application for the interim marina director?
You know. A, I'm too old. B, you can't afford me. I may be crazy, but I'm not stupid.
You're within walking distance. It could be your contribution to the city.
Thank you. I don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not too old. Thank you.
Moving on to public comment.
Yeah, well, I'm going to comment a little later on about another subject, but on the marina, I want to give you a precedent. Eight years ago, our water and sewer was on the block for $26.5 million. And city council at that time had it appraised. It was worth $101.5, as it stood, at least that's what GAI said. And at the same time, city council asked GAI to do a study of it, of how it could be more efficient, and that was done. And we had an outstanding guy, I think I saw him, Rob Bolton. And what we did, what city council did, and it should be done here, is we said to Rob Bolton, "Okay, you know what needs to be done. You know what needs to be done. You've got a plan that tells you some of the things that need to be done. Please go do them." And we have a wonderful water and sewer department at this point, and we've been able to put in the step system from the benefit. You know, there are other examples in this city. There's Lonny Scott, I think, in the garbage department, Eric Minger at the airport, Monty Falls in Public Works. And, you know, this city has a lot of talented people. You hire the right talented person and give them a two-year contract, as Mr. Drewitt said, and you give them the money, and you're far, far ahead of the game. I mean, that's what we've done, and that's where we're successful, and that's what works. And this whole idea that government shouldn't do this or shouldn't do that, I don't accept that. I mean, I can tell you as many failures in my life in business that business has made as compared to government. So, I think the Rob Bolton water and sewer model, allocate the money, find the right person, and tell them to do it. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Phyllis Frye, city resident. I'd like to thank Mr. Drewitt for his very carefully constructed plan for saving our marina. I encourage this council to consider and approve it. His extensive resume, if you've had a chance to look over it, reveals his success in restructuring companies, taking them from near solvency to profitability, into industry-leading performers with quick turnaround times. His plan would achieve the following: keep the city marina in the hands of management, not under a lease-for-profit agreement, thus complying with the city charter; give the city, i.e. the public, control over the marina's future; put the marina in an immediate profit mode; provide incentivized controlled growth; cover all necessary upgrades and repairs without encroaching into the parklands or negatively impacting our neighborhoods. It's important to note that our barrier island marina and parks generate millions in revenue for the city. People frequently purchase homes here because we have parks and a marina located on parkland. They start businesses, they raise families, they buy homes, pay taxes, and invest long-term in our community. I listen to many people in this community. I listened to over 1,200 of them recently when they spoke out against putting commercial enterprise in McWilliam Park, and sometimes finding out what people do want that works for the community is to first know what they don't want. They do not want a project of enormity, such as a marina overlay district that would cover all the current parks and marina properties, including the adjacent McWilliams Park, under one high-density population development district that would construct up to 300 wet slips, allowing one motel unit for every two watercraft slips, or 150 motel units, as was proposed earlier, including restaurants, hotels, other commercial enterprises compacted, compressed, and condensed on our waterfront parklands. Mr. Drewitt's plan includes none of these elements. The public does not want actions taken nor encroachments approved that would be injurious to our quality of life or forfeit the character of our low-density residential neighborhoods or lose our legal right to quiet enjoyment or suffer degradation of our property values. We're not afraid of change. We encourage you to support Mr. Drewitt's plan for profitability and graceful growth. We're strong in our traditions, and we will defend our laws and our resources from exploitation. And speaking of laws, I'll provide you with a legal document, which I'd like to read for the public in my next three-minute comment.
I think we all have this, actually. It was distributed.
We have.
Yeah.
Well, at least it's in paper.
That's okay.
Tree killer.
Okay, for the public, this letter is from a Mr. Arkham attorney, Terrell K. Arline, a Tallahassee attorney, sent to Mr. O'Connor December 10th. Dear Mr. O'Connor, I represent friends of the marina and write regarding the request for proposals, RFP, to lease the city marina to a private entity, which the Marine Commission will consider on Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. I've reviewed the response to the RFP submitted by Oasis Marina's LLC, the City Marina at Vero Beach LLC. Both proposals seek to privatize the existing public marina through a long-term lease. Oasis requests an initial term of 25 years. City Marina proposes a 40-year lease with extensions. As you must know, Section 5.05 of the city charter limits the alienation of certain city-owned property, including specifically the municipal marina. It is my opinion that under the charter, a vote of the electors, i.e. a referendum, is required before the city may lease the marina to a private entity to operate a for-profit business. In addition, I've reviewed several of the project agreements between the city and the Florida Inland Navigation District, or FINE, which provides state funding to develop the marina property. I've concluded it is very important that the city carefully consider these agreements, because they require that the city itself manage the marina and compel the return of grant funds in the event that the city transfers ownership or control of the marina to a non-governmental entity. Please include this letter in the public record on this matter, demonstrating my client's opposition to the current proposal to lease the marina. See to yours, Terrell K. Arline. Thank you.
Ms. Hoots, name and address.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Megan Hoots, 1825 21st Avenue, City of Vero Beach. First of all, thank you, Mr. Drewitt. Thank you for the educational and informative presentation. This is the kind of well-formed conversations that we need to have around our city assets. It's been pretty frustrating to watch members of the city council disregard thoughtful solutions and move straight towards selling. So, I appreciate your efforts, and thank you. I hope they are, your presentation is considered in earnest by everyone. Actually, I have a bigger question to propose. It's my understanding that under the city charter, city council members serve for two terms and give or take two weeks for the annual calendar. So, three of you have spent your term. Florida election laws don't actually have any language about extending a term for special circumstances, to my knowledge. I'm not a lawyer. And the judge has ruled for a special election, but didn't rule who should hold office until that special election. So, do you have a quorum? Or are there only two elected officials sitting at this podium right now?
Wayne, do you want to address that?
Because Lang Sykes is definitely not elected, like 100%. Take him off. He didn't even run. So, like, he served his term, right?
Who?
Councilmember Sykes. I mean...
Could councilmembers stay in office until their successors are sworn in?
Not, I mean, if you look at the city charter, that's not really how the language...
Read the city charter. It's in there, trust me. I'm a lawyer.
I actually can read that from here without my glasses. It says city attorney.
Plus, go check the Florida Constitution. It has the same kind of language for state and county officials. We use similar language.
So, the city residents elected city council members to serve for two terms?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years.
Two-year term, but you're not replaced until your successor is sworn in. Yeah, but common sense to, you don't want empty offices.
No, I know I don't. Like, that's 100%.
They remain in office until their successors become sworn in.
So, all right, you have, you, so as the city attorney, you have a quorum right now?
Absolutely. We have a full house.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hoots.
Good evening. I'm Bill Walker. I live in the South County on St. Christopher Lane, and just wanted to share some information I had regarding the last meeting's proposal, and that was to consider a management agreement. I think instruct Jim to go out with RFPs for a management agreement versus leasing versus direct operation by the city. I think that's probably something you ought to seriously consider. Be very viable. I took the liberty a few days ago, and you all know where targets for the list. That's being operated under a management agreement. That marina was in very poor shape, and I can attest to that, having been there on cruises five to six times. And I went through the marina and took pictures and shared them with different people and took a lot of notes. And that marina is being operated by a company that Jim's familiar with, F3, from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And they are doing an outstanding job there, in my estimation, from a staffing standpoint to the improvements, working under a tight budget that was allocated to them by the city, to just generally fantastic improvements. The staffing was first-rate, all in uniforms, very pleasant, very helpful. I told them who I was. I was from Vero Beach. I was just there to observe. And I told them how impressed I was, and from a firsthand standpoint. I've been in Vero, my family has, since 1967. I've been boating here longer than Lang, probably, since 1967, because I'm a little older than Lang. But I can tell you, I have a lot of experience with marinas, with cruising all throughout Florida, the Bahamas. And what that management agreement has done, which was put into effect, they actually put it out for RFP in June of 2015. F3 began operation and control of that marina in September of 2015. And what they've done in this, I would say, relatively short period of time is completely turned that marina around. In talking to the young ladies that are running the front end, they took it over with 46% occupancy. They are now at 98% occupancy and very proud to talk about that number. It's a combination of factors. If somebody wanted to look at the pictures that I have, you'd be able to see what they've done. It's very, very, very obvious. So, I really am just up here to say, I encourage you to really take a good, close look at the management agreement, using a company similar to F3, or there's many others that are out there that do the same thing. And that would save you the burden of having to hire people if you did decide that you wanted to continue running it as a city. And I think it benefits the residents and the income by, and I could be proven wrong in that, and Jim's probably looked at that before, because earlier we were going to do a management agreement, and then we backed away from it, and then we went for the leasing. But I really think you need to take a look at management agreement again, because it's maybe the best way to run that marina. And I would encourage you. And I would encourage you, each of you who have not been up to Titusville, take a ride up there. It's not that far. It took me an hour and a half, and you can see a very similar type situation as we have here, a tired, that was a tired, old Marina, needing a lot of work. And these people have completely turned it around, in my estimation. So, you got any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Did they keep the same ambiance of it? I mean, was it changed in the management effort?
Well, I think one of the advantages they had is the city was under a lot of, they had a lot of damage from the '04 hurricanes. So the city really put the docks back together in '05, in '06. So they walked in, pretty much able to, be able to, in '15, to be able to operate that and just make the cosmetic, mostly, most of the cosmetic improvements, the landscaping, the redoing of the old building. And these are old buildings. These are old structures, very similar to ours. That's why I'm saying, I suggest you go up and take a look at this, because you'll see the relationship as I did, or as I already knew. And it makes a lot of sense to kind of model what they did as to what you may have in mind to do with our Marina.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for driving up there and checking it out.
Yeah, it was a great day.
Good evening, I'm Beverly Paris. I'm here to change the subject for a minute, three minutes. I'd like to support Tammy Bursek, and that's why I'm here tonight. When I first heard that Tammy Bursek had been asked to leave her post as city clerk, I was simply flabbergasted. I've known Tammy in this capacity for many years. I've worked with her. She's become a close business associate and a friend. So this incredulous insinuation was difficult for me to process. A loss of confidence for a person who has done her job, excelled at her job for over 30 years, is just plain wrong, hurtful, and insulting. How could anyone on city council or elsewhere have any issues with the Tammy Bursek I know and respect? With the woman that many in this room, as you can witness tonight, have come to support, along with the hordes of people who have called, emailed, texted, and written letters, all in her support? Over 30 years ago, Tammy entered an ad for a part-time switchboard operator here at City Hall. She took the job, and in her first week, she was asked to take over the vacant city clerk job, which she accepted. Since then, Tammy has spent long hours working with the public, City Hall staff, and five different constantly revolving city council members, and has excelled at every challenge along the way. Her job has been nothing less than a sheer joy for Tammy. She's become a public figure, involved in many local organizations and fundraisers, and in some cases is president or key organizer. Tammy received her Master Municipal Clerk designation. She's been named the City Clerk of the Year. She served as the President of the City Clerk Association, and last year danced with pride to the song "The City" while raising thousands of dollars for the Healthy Star Coalition. Tammy became a natural ambassador for the city, intermingling with the community, attending functions, or running marathons throughout the city she loves. Always with a smile on her face, Tammy's the one to raise her hand and lead a charge. Thanks to her leadership, Vero Beach celebrated the 75th and the 90th anniversaries, and now with the centennial, Tammy has proudly planted the seeds for this celebration. Without a doubt, Tammy is the centennial's driving force and the glue in keeping every aspect of the centennial in a forward motion. As our matriarch, Alma Lee Loy has said time and time again, "Vero is a special place." Tammy knows that very well. So, let's quit the blame game. Instead, city council, please recognize the service that Tammy has given to this special community, where she has lived, where she has worked, and she has helped to cultivate new memories for others to enjoy for decades to come. This voting mishap that has brought us to this point tonight should be recognized as an opportunity for city council to pull out the city's policies and procedures for not only the election process, but also other important policies that may be outdated, they need to be dusted off and ready for change. In conclusion, as everyone knows who follows baseball, when there's a problem with the team, you never fire the players. You get rid of the coach and his staff, the ones who set the policies and establish the procedures. Well, coaches, I am not advocating for that to happen. We don't want to get rid of our coaching staff, but I do want you to know that as far as I'm concerned, Tammy Bursek is batting a thousand. Thank you for your time.
I'm Angie Sheppers, Vero Beach. I want to second everything Bev said and say a few other things. First off, I want to say I believe the issue is a procedural issue, not a personnel issue. If it was, I believe it wasn't just one person. Tammy has over 30 years of dedicated, loyal service as an employer. I'll tell you, you don't find that these days. You don't find somebody who's going to stay with one job and be dedicated and give as much as Tammy does for one year, much less 30. So I think anybody who hires people knows that and can recognize the dedication that Tammy has. She always goes above and beyond in her, of her job description. I met her decorating a Christmas tree over 12 years ago, because nobody else would do it. That's how I got to know her. She's decorating the Christmas tree at Sexton Plaza for the city, at like 9 o'clock at night. That's how we met. I've worked with Tammy on many events, most recently the centennial this year. I can tell you that the centennial would not be near what it is without the work of Tammy Bursek. She goes above and beyond. She goes out to this, to the community, and she gets people, and people want to help when Tammy approaches them. People will give something and help just because of Tammy's nature, and they know that she's sincere and what good work she does. She always has the city's best interests in looking to help the city as she moves on. She's involved in so many projects and groups, and really makes a positive impact. And I believe everybody would believe that Tammy makes an extremely positive impact on the city of Vero Beach and our community. I'm sorry, I'm shaking. She, this is really bothering me. I'd like to believe that all of you up there have the city's best interests at heart. I hope that you rethink any thoughts of asking her to leave or letting her go. I'm hoping you don't let one event define your character of what an incredible person Tammy is. I certainly wouldn't want somebody to take a snapshot of one event and make a decision on me or my life, as I'm sure none of us would. I do think that we should all work as a team, and we should all be understanding and forgiving and find a way to fix the procedures, and not sacrifice someone as loyal and dedicated as Tammy Bursek. I thank you all for your time, and hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Sheppers.
Can we squeeze in here? Deborah Outwell, Vicki Gould, we both live in the city. And we are probably the world's oldest flower girls tonight, but we're going to give it a go anyway. And the floor is all closed at 5 o'clock, so we had to sub in. We're here, of course, to present these to Tammy. And looking out tonight at everyone here, we're wondering if we have succeeded in placing a rose in this vase for all of her supporters here. I think we might be deficient, but if we could stand up each rose that came to support our perfect rose this evening, and endorse her hard work, and recognize Tammy's efforts. And these flowers, even though we're presenting them to you, they are from the community. We support you in every way. This is super upsetting. I hope you all are listening to what the community wants. And if you're blaming this whole election thing on one person, you are, that is not what the settlement said, and if this always, if this came up because of this, then you are putting the blame on her, which is unfair, and I hope all of you remember that, because we're going to remember how you treat her and what the community wants. I hope you listen to, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Hillman, 2315 18th Avenue in Vero Beach. I'm standing here in support of Tammy. She's dedicated over 30 years to this community and the city. I am in no way faulting Tammy for what has happened with this election. I want to remind everyone of you, and myself, that we signed a settlement agreement that has a no-fault clause in it. I would have never signed that if I would have known that this was going to happen to Tammy, and that she would have to endure what I've had to go through the past couple of months. The attempt to make Tammy the scapegoat is outrageous. I believe the city council blaming Tammy Bursek minimally violates the spirit and the content of our agreement, and it's totally wrong. This is a no-blame contract. We must move forward, and I believe it's imperative that Tammy be retained in her present capacity, and that this council empower her to revise the election procedures. And there's no one better than Tammy to do it. So I'm going to read from our settlement agreement contract, and I know Ms. Moss is going to do that later on also. Page 3, paragraph 2. Nothing herein shall constitute or be construed as an admission of fault by either parties. All parties will deny any wrongdoing. Number 3, I'm sorry, 5. The language of this agreement shall not be construed for or against any one person. Number 12. In the event that either party violates the term of this agreement, the prevailing party in any action to enforce the terms of the agreement shall be entitled to the attorney's fees and cost. And our final one is the final judgment agreement. Page 2, clause 5. The court retains continuing jurisdiction over this matter in order to enforce, construe, interpret, and otherwise ensure compliance by all parties with this agreed final judgment. And I know that there are city council members on here that did not agree with this, but it was passed, 3 to 2. And I would hate to say that I would take it back to court because of the violation of this. It is a no-fault agreement. And if I take it back to court, if this should happen and Tammy gets fired, I will take it back to court, and this time I won't stop. I was begged not to stop, and I did. I will not stop next time, I promise.
I happen to agree with Mrs. Hillman, and I did not want to stop.
Arthur Economy, Indian River Drive East. Certain council members believe Tammy Bursek is solely responsible for the election debacle. There is no proof that any individuals had fault at this present time. There is proof that the process needs to be more secure and tamper-proof. All parties accepted a no-fault settlement. Instead of getting to work immediately to fix this process, certain council members preferred to place blame on one person. Tammy performed all duties overseen and governed by this very council. It was the city on trial, not Tammy Bursek. If this is going to be, if this, if there is going to be a trial tonight, then your electorate would like to add certain council members to the list of defendants. The charges are as follows. One, disruption of productive and proper use of council power. Two, attempted reduction of government and staff via private business. Three, acting to create charter contested issues that can and will lead to legal jeopardy for the city. Four, orchestrating city council meetings to fit personal agenda. Five, acting to deconstruct community by trying to lease or sell public property, public and charter-protected land to developers without public referendum or public support, such as leasing of River House, sale of Dodger Town Golf Course, sale of the sewer and power plant property, sale of the post office, and leasing of the City Marina. Six, deliberately rushing decisions to vote when city residents have not been fully informed, therefore evading public process. Seven, intentionally deciding to vote void of consultation, public comments, committee input, but inclusive of developer interests. Thank you.
I'm here again, Dick Wanger, 1361 Indian Mound Trail. I'm here to support Tammy Bursek, and, you know, I want to, again, give you a little philosophy. She worked for me for six years. Of course, she worked for five people at a time, but I was mayor for two successive terms. I was elected three times as city council, and I know Tammy Bursek's work well. And Tammy Bursek is what I call an A employee. Let me tell you about employees. I rose to the vice president, executive vice president level with four companies, 31 years with Unilever, which is a worldwide major company. And I learned, I had many hundreds and hundreds of people work for me over that period of time. And I divided them in between Fs, Ds, Bs, Cs, and As. And, you know, you get a few Fs. I had a guy that ran over a kid in the Bronx, hit and run with a company car. I had people that steal things, but there are very, very few in America. And then there's, those are the F employees, and you don't keep them one minute. In fact, you call the sheriff. And then there are the D employees that really are never going to measure up, and you can't stand to have D employees. And they're not a real big slice either. I believe most Americans believe in the work ethic and want to work hard. I really do. And it's been proven to me over hundreds and hundreds of people, and over wonderful results in the places I've been restructuring companies. And then you have Bs and Cs. Cs need management. They need direction. They're maybe the biggest group, but slightly bigger than the Bs. You treasure the Bs, because the Bs will do the right thing most of the time. But they need a little management. And then there's the As, the stars, the real, real stars. You know, this city, in my history with, I worked for Cargill for a while, Dairy Gold in Seattle, others. This city's unusual that it has had, has more A employees than any place I've ever worked, and that's why it works in spite of us who are on city or are on city council. I'll name a few. Monty Fall, Eric Menjer, Eric and the Recreation, Rob Bolton, who I mentioned a while ago. I'm not going to get them all. Chief Curry, Letty Scott, who runs your garbage or waste management. Brian Collier and Ted Fletcher, who are going to lose in a couple days, but they're from the electric. Brian is supervisors the linemen and brought the lines back after two hurricanes, three hurricanes. And Tammy Bursek. Tammy Bursek is an A employee. And, you know, sometimes A employees, something goes wrong. I don't know why, but something goes a little wrong. But you treasure them. You help them, and you go forward. You know, the right solution to what has happened, what others have talked to, is nobody knows the procedures and what's being done better than Tammy, and no one is better motivated to fix the procedures into the future, so this sort of thing can never happen again. I agree with what's said. Nobody's at fault. The systems are at fault. I'm going to ask you to stand one more time if you support Tammy Bursek. I'm going to ask you to stand one more time if you support Tammy Bersik. Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to stand in opposition to Tammy Bersik?
Hello again. It's been an interesting election year. As a matter of civic duty, I spent the recent Florida election in Palm Beach verifying ballot recounts. There were overvotes, undervotes, missing ballots, duplicate ballots, and all manner of discrepancies with ample evidence of election tampering. When it comes to voter fraud and collusion and corruption and coronialism, you don't have to look far to find it. But closer to home, it was painful to observe our own city election debacle, which leaves an indelible black mark on our history. The gravest outcome is that this council did not heed the advice of its canvassing board. It cost the taxpayer $25,000, but more than that, more than that, the public trust was broken and was denied the right to a free and fair and unencumbered election with all candidates on the ballot. It is a public disgrace, and nothing will ever restore the integrity of this election. If justice could be served, every person, every person involved in this ignominious failure would be brought back under oath and have the issues reviewed. At Judge Canorex's hearing, I observed city clerk Tammy Bersik and Linda Hillman testifying under oath, backed by a sworn eyewitness, that Linda Hillman's documents as an applicant for candidacy were reviewed page by page, and that every page was completed and signed. I've worked with councils and commissions from Brevard to Dade Counties and their municipalities for nearly ten years, for example, exposing the truth about Virgin Trains, AKA All Aboard Florida, and regionalism versus homel of law and other community matters. And in working with the Vero Beach City Councils, Tammy Bersik has consistently provided superior service for me. I needed research material or documents, proposals, agendas, minutes, transcripts, archives of any kind, and in answering all queries, she provided me with accurate, timely, polite, and professional service. Whenever I was in a hurry or needed critically important information, Tammy was there. I could always count on her. My work could not have been completed without her assistance. Having a long-term, honest employee with outstanding loyalty, respected by many in her profession, is an invaluable asset. It is my view that you owe, Ms. Bersik, a public apology, and that firing her would be a wrongful termination. Your inter-office upheaval concurrent with the recent election includes the resignation of the head of the Finex Committee, the resignation of our city attorney. I'm going to miss you, Mr. Coment. We all are. And the proposal to fire Ms. Bersik. Is there a non-disclosure severance package from Santa under the tree in the future? The voting public would appreciate transparency, improved security, and more stringent inter-office protocols, and I thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen. It wasn't too many years ago that I sat in these very same chairs.
Sir, your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I beg your pardon. My name is Ken Mock. I'm a former mayor and city councilman, as well as a county commissioner. And I live at, where do I live? 545 Thirty-Ninth Court. And I'll swear by that. I guess I probably know Ms. Bersik longer than ninety percent of the people in this room. I remember when she came aboard as an assistant to the clerk, and when that clerk unfortunately passed away, the council unanimously appointed Tammy. A great vote of confidence. And subsequent to that, there were many instances where Tammy served myself and my colleagues and never anything but a vote of confidence, silent or otherwise. She has been a paragon for what a servant in a governmental entity ought to be. She is discreet. When information comes her way, it stays with her. It is not bandied about town, given to reporters, or political opponents, or any of that. Couldn't ask for a better person. And after my service as mayor, I moved on to the county commission. And we frequently made, in the interest of inner governmental points of interest, she was the contact person for our city attorney, I'm sorry, county attorney, and the chairman of the commission, who three times was me. So I hope we'll abandon this effort to ask for a vote of no confidence, when in all her career, all she has ever heard is confidence, confidence, every meaning of that word. And you've heard a lot tonight, but maybe in the season of Advent, heading for the celebration of the anniversary of our Lord, we might remember what he said. He who is without sin casts the first stone. Merry Christmas.
I think Mayor Mock was looking at my notes. Sudaneno, I own property in Vero Beach. I'm a co-owner of a business on Fourteenth Avenue, and I serve on the Recreation Commission. And I just wanted you to consider, from a management perspective, what the message is that you're sending to your employees. Is it that you're valued, or is it that you're subject to scapegoating as required? If an employee of Tammy's caliber can be scapegoated, what of the mere mortal employees you have? I suggest that the message you send shouldn't be, experience, loyalty, and expertise is rewarded by termination. It's a wrong thing.
Good evening. My name is Lolita Jenke, and I'm at 2136 North Purpose Point Street. I came here to support Tammy with no intention of speaking, but I know that once, if I did not speak up on behalf of Tammy, I would not rest easy with myself after the meeting. I've known Tammy for over twenty years, and the word on the street is, if you need any help with the city or with the county, ask Tammy, and she will direct you to the right person. Everybody has a job, or people have jobs and get paid for doing things, but Tammy goes above and beyond as an ambassador for the city voluntarily, doing things when nobody asks her to do it. She sees something needs to be done, and Tammy does it. As part of Compassion Vero, I think we should have compassion on ourselves for making such a horrible, painful process for Tammy to go through. If anybody knows Tammy, they know that she would never, ever do anything that would be wrong, and she would have taken counsel before she did anything. So we need to look at ourselves as to why we are pointing the blame at one woman when there were many people higher than her, and the spotlight should have been on them. So Tammy, on behalf of the city, I'm sorry for putting you in this predicament, that the city had to know all about you when you've done nothing but good deeds everywhere you went. And knowing you, you do things quietly, and that's your style, to be under the radar and volunteer very quietly. So thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Good evening.
Good evening. And my heart is racing right now, and I've sat in your seats as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. My name is Anna Brady, and I live at 1735 Twentieth Court in the city of Vero Beach. I'm a lifelong resident. My husband Bill and I are current property owners. We own some land in the city. We built a house. We've renovated, historically renovated another house, and we're in the middle of building a new house. We're vested in the city of Vero Beach. We are investors with our hearts and our soul and our wallets. I'm here tonight to express my husband's and my hundred percent support for the city clerk, Tammy Bersik. And of course, it's hard to look at her, get emotional. I've worked for local government before, okay? So I have some experience. I've worked for City of Fort Pierce for three years as a historic planner. And I can attest to the fact that Tammy is competent in her job. She's not just competent, as others have said, she goes above and beyond to fulfill her duties as city clerk, but most of all, to meet the added demands of our local government that strives to operate so lean financially that employees have to take on a lot of extra duties that are not common of other communities similar to ours. And they shouldn't say "have to." They just go above and beyond and choose to do it. There's no doubt that Tammy is an exceptional employee, and she definitely doesn't deserve to be treated this way. In addition to my public service, I have worked for private enterprise, enterprise and nonprofit sector. A business owner or board of directors who doesn't value their better and best-performing employees in a positive way, in my mind, is doomed to fail. So a lot of you ask the question, why do you, why do the citizens think that we want to dismantle the city? This is another reason why. We really feel this way because of some of the examples that are brought up at the city council. I'm finally addressing it, and I'm sorry I haven't addressed it individually to each and every one of you. But this is my city, and I am so proud of it. And I think, no offense to South Florida, but it's becoming more and more like that because we're growing. And I want to see us get back to that wonderful city, Vero Beach, that I grew up in. Doesn't mean that it was all rosy. But let's be polite to each other. And also, can I just mention one more thing, or Matt? Dr. Sudaneno, you did bring up something on social media about salary, and I did check around. It took an effort to...
But just be sure to address the council.
Okay, just the council. There was a post on social media about the salary, and I did investigate that with cities our size, and it's very comparable, so you have a human resource department that can do that as well. Thank you.
Brian Hedy, for President 2020. I am lots of things. Tony knows that. DAV, right? Volunteer, Disabled American Veterans. Photographer. And I have a photograph that won a prize. And I changed the aperture, and in the background were the gorgeous Catskill Mountains in fall/autumn bloom. But you can't see the mountains. There's just a blur of color. Because when I changed the aperture, I focused in on a single maple leaf. It was gorgeous. That's what we've done here. We focused in on the maple leaf. She is not the one that wrote the legal memorandum. Tammy didn't remove anyone. There was a legal memorandum. Talk to the city attorney. The election had two names removed because of an unsigned legal memorandum, which was a legal opinion, and that's all it was, and it was addressed to the canvassing board. Tammy is not the guilty party here. And everybody's focusing on Tammy, and I like the nice words said about her, I'd agree with them. But I disagree with the focus on Tammy. The focus shouldn't be on Tammy. The focus should be on the city attorney. Talk to the city attorney. Why did he allow his office to send out a memo, an opinion, that somehow wound up in the county's office, and two names were removed? It was an unsigned memo by an assistant to Mr. Coment. I asked Mr. Coment whether or not he authorized that, whether he authored it. And there was a screaming match, and it wasn't a screaming match because I wasn't doing any screaming, it was strictly Mr. Coment. And if I used the words that he used at me, and there were witnesses right back out in front of Tammy's office, if I used those words at this meeting, then the police officer would take me out for the second time tonight. And then at the end of his foul language routine, Mr. Coment said that I should feel privileged that he even allowed me to ask a question. He didn't give me any answers, but I should be privileged. I should feel privileged that I'm allowed to ask him a question. Perhaps we should all be privileged because we pay a portion of his salary. Stop blaming Tammy. I admire and thank you for your support. She's all of the things that you said. What she's not, though, is she's not to blame for this election fiasco. Secondly, at the very beginning of this meeting, I talked about the minutes of a special call meeting in which they approved a new election. They approved a new election. They approved the resolution at a meeting where there was no public notice or opportunity for the public to comment. I would submit to you, as a matter of law, that they probably need to take action to set a new election. Because as of this date, there is no legal election authorized by this city council. You can't do things in a back room and come out to a meeting and make motions and vote on things without giving public notice.
Thank you, Mr. Hedy.
Good evening, council. My name is Joseph Cafanti, and I live at 441 Holly Road in the city of Vero Beach. I didn't come here to praise Tammy. That doesn't need to be done. Everybody knows what a great person she is. Rather, I have to say that this is the most despicable, arrogant city council that I've encountered over the last twenty-five or more years. It's a disgrace that this irreversible situation has come this far. And I can't wait to hear what Valde, whatever his name is, Sudan, says, so I'll sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Cafanti. See the public comment this time? Seeing none, we will end public comment. Mr. City Manager, I would like to get through the consent agenda, if you don't mind, and then we'll talk about having our break after the consent agenda. Does that suit everyone? So we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, an agreement for the temporary use of facilities and equipment to the town of Indian River Shores. This allows them to use our firing range. We have similar types of agreement with the Sheriff's Department. Ward of a contract for convergence technologies, airport, terminal, and ramp. This is security upgrades. A bid of sulfuric acid that would be used at the water plant. What this does is... What this does is prevents the scaling of membranes on our, on the osmosis process. The professional services, Advco, expenditures $59,080. It's asset management software. It allows us to track assets, and it's a software that is used in the water and wastewater department. Replacement of the WWTP and the wastewater treatment plant vertical turbine pumps. These are four pumps. It's going to be a cost of $269,200, and it's a replacement of those pumps. This really deals with the freshwater supply as well as the reuse water. Police Department elevator, final payment of $14,678. This has been another one of those projects that's been going on for some time, but this is the final payment to the contractor for the work that they have done. The reef engineering Nutriton study, this is the Phase II. This is the part of the process of our studies for the moving of the wastewater treatment plant off of the water, off of the river. And this would be, depending on how the study comes out, but sort of the cost justification of doing that on the Nutriton removal. And then the termination of a contract with Pruitt Electrical Contractor, $66,250. This is one of those electric contracts that had a continuing life that we have terminated because of the sale, the impending sale on Monday. Be very happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions, council?
Negative.
Yes, sir. A couple things. Where's my notes here? Chief, on the weapons range for the police department, it refers to an Order 37. I don't know what that is. Can you elucidate, please? You know what I'm talking about?
Regarding the agreement with any-
Yeah, it's in the agreement. It refers to Order 37 and makes reference to that, and I have no idea what Order 37 is.
Specifically, not offhand, sir, but this is common. Any of the agencies in the surrounding area that want to use our facility, and we certainly encourage that and try to work with those agencies to include local, county, state, and even federal, we have them sign an agreement, a liability agreement, risk agreement.
How long has, how long has Indian River Shores had access? I mean, is this a new-
This is, this is new.
New.
They wanted to utilize our range, and we didn't want to allow that until we had this agreement done. And again, we have this with other agencies throughout the county.
Where in the proposal are you referring to?
I didn't bring it with me, but I'm-
Okay, so it's not in the cover information?
No, it's, it's online, and when I scrutinized the online summary of it, I was comfortable with everything, but I didn't understand what that was, and so I wanted some clarity.
I could, I could look at that certainly. I could actually serve it.
I'm not gonna, I will trust you.
Yes, sir.
If you would just provide me that information so I'm clear on what that is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then-
Tell me, is this, is this what you're looking for?
No, that's just the summary page. No, fine, I'll just, you know. Okay, the other thing is, if I, if we could, can Rob speak to the study? Give us a little bit more information on that, please.
Can I ask a question about the range, since you brought it up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, on the range, do they, do they make a financial contribution for the use of the range?
At this time, no.
Okay. Is that customary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. On those same lines then, on those same lines then, chief, I know that we have to do shell retrieval and things like that, and also, don't we, on occasion, we have to retrieve the ammunition from the berm?
We mine the field, the berm, is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
We did that. Actually, we had set aside about $50,000 to do that, and we didn't have to spend that because we got a company, I believe they were out of Montana, and they mined the field, and basically they mine and get the lead, and then they sell it, you know, overseas and to other companies. So that's kind of their payment, if you will, is the lead they get from the berm. Meanwhile, we're pretty much lead-free for the most part, until we shoot again.
The only reason I was asking is because would it be, you know, I wanted to know if it would be prudent to charge another agency if we have to pay for the cleanup, but it sounds like that's-
And we're working on the, the range improvements while I'm up here, and again, I know we're north of $100,000 in our foundation monies. So we continue to get monies into that foundation for the range use. And again, that's kind of a 2019 project that we hope to literally break ground and start moving forward to some repairs and upgrades.
So just out of curiosity, if they go up to the Indian River County range in Sebastian, and if the Indian River Shores goes up there, do they have to pay to use that range?
They, they do pay. And, and this isn't, this is on a, on occasion, they may have a new officer that needs to qualify.
Yeah.
And they need to kind of in a pinch, if you will. They're not out there, nor are the other agencies out there that often. They, they do utilize either the college or the North County range and pay.
It wouldn't hurt to ask for just like, you know, a contribution to our foundation, you know, and as a, anyway, I don't know if they can.
I think they're going to be willing to do some things like that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But again, we have to remember, for instance, the Sheriff's Department, they, instead of us sending our officers throughout the state to train our canines, they do that free of charge.
Yeah, so you got your circles.
Right out there. So we give and take, and we work together.
Good.
So if we do something like that, and the Sheriff's Department wants to use our range, then I'm all for that.
I agree.
I will tell you, living on the north end of the island, Indian River Shores does give police patrol up there, especially for speeders.
Okay.
They are very good about pulling people off within the corporate limits of the city.
It's good to have friendly neighbors.
It is, right.
But they're truly not out there that often, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions for chief?
Thank you, Chief Carey.
Have a good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Bolton.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You had some questions on, first, let me clarify one thing. We're not moving the plant. We would have to build a new one.
I read the notes.
There's no U-Haul trucks coming to drag that thing. Bright Lines not going to put it on their tracks and move it up there.
I just use this as an opportunity to provide you an, and a vehicle to speak to the public on what's going on.
The nutrient study that you have for consideration tonight is a second part of what we've been looking at as far as what can we do at the existing plant, and then what would it take to build something new at the airport site. Originally, how it transferred, we got to this point was we started with a nutrient study at the existing plant, and then along about October or so, the idea came about, well, let's look at what the cost is to, to build a new facility at the airport site. So you approved that second one. The first one really that existed at the existing site was to come in, look at what the flows were, look at what the nutrient loadings were, and then kind of come up with some alternatives as to what we could do at the existing site. This is the evaluation, full-depth evaluation, and then assigning a cost dollar amount to what that would cost. So at the end of the day, you're going to have an apples-to-apples comparison. We tweaked this one a little bit because one of the processes that we could use at the new site up at the airport, we really didn't consider in the first round at the existing site because it probably would have cost a lot of money. However, I didn't want to omit that because I think it's important that the new process at the airport site, if we have a dollar amount, we need to compare it to what it would take to build that at, you know, retrofit the existing site. So, so now in front of you is this second phase of the process at the existing to evaluate, or not to evaluate, evaluations done, but to actually go in and cost out what the improvements would take to meet different levels of nutrient removal at the existing site.
And the timeline we're looking at for the completion is-
Probably you're looking at about a 60-day process for them. Yeah, they're not, it's not a, now it might take by the time you sign contracts, all that, through Christmas, you know, and into next year. But you're not talking about a long, drawn-out thing. No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So if we have any public comment about the consent agenda, we'll move on to that at this point. Any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And we will take a 10-minute break. Does that suit everyone? 10 minutes? Great. All right, so we'll take a, let's just call it 7:10, we'll come back. All right. Call the meeting back to order. This is, let me, we entered, earlier, we, we went back and we, we had approved minutes and we disapproved the minutes, and we've had the, our city attorneys go back and review the tape. In fact, the, the meeting went exactly as we had intended and exactly as planned, and verbatim of what's in the minutes. So I want to go back now and approve the minutes from November 27th, special call meeting.
Can we just have the city attorney confirm that? Is that accurate?
I'm sorry?
Could you confirm that for us, sir?
Yes. Ms. Hans and I both just listened to the recording of that, and it's pretty much verbatim in the minutes that there was no mention whatsoever that there would not be-
And Mr. Hetty, since we've already reviewed the minutes, and this is not public comment, then we're not going to take public comment. So you can have a seat. We're going to continue with our meeting. And also, since we already reviewed the tape again.
Would you like to listen?
I'd like for you to sit down.
So you're just going to flat-out lie once again?
I don't think anybody's lying, and I don't like, I don't like the way that you're insinuating anybody's lying. In fact, I'd like it if you sat down.
Insinuate? I'm outright saying you're lying.
Mr. Mayor, if that's, if he's taking a recording of November 27th, I don't have any problem with hearing it. He'll hear the same thing we just heard if he's got the official recording.
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't he, doesn't he, why doesn't he submit it? He can just submit it to-
Sure he can.
The city, and then it can be reviewed by-
I mean, we just listened to the official record, not something on somebody's phone, so.
Right. Not, not, not an actual videotape of, of the actual meeting.
And not, not everybody in the room can see whatever's on your phone either, Mr.-
I'd be happy to have all loaded on.
Do you want to have calls play it? Not this minute, but play it tonight. We can continue the, with the agenda, but we can play it. It's only-
Yeah, we don't have the equipment.
It would have to come back on January.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's a waste of our time, and everybody else's, because we've already reviewed the tapes. They're on the record, they're on the website, so.
How is it a waste of your time?
So, Mr. Hetty-
If the document that I have is contrary to what you're being told.
Running the meeting, so have a seat, and we're going to move along now. Thank you very much for coming up.
Hold on just one second.
Yeah?
If I can pull it up here and just play it over my microphone, it's only audio, it's not a video, I'd be glad to play it for you. It's very short. Kara, is that under, just under minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Let's bring this special call, this is the council meeting, it's Tuesday, November 27th, and this is a special call meeting that we will commence after a vote call, if you would, Tammy, please.
Captain Zidians.
Here.
Colonel Young.
Here.
Councilwoman Moss.
President.
Vice Mayor Sykes.
President.
Mayor Howe.
President. Mr. City Attorney, would you give us your request to the city council?
Yes, sir. I've been invited here so that I can request advice from the city council regarding settlement negotiations and strategy relating to litigation expenditures with regard to the case of Hillman versus Socida, Vero Beach, et al., pending in the Circuit Court of the 19th Judicial Circuit, case number 312019CA000696. And if you would like to retire privately, we can have that discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is the commencement of the attorney-client session. The estimated time for the closed attorney-client session is 30 to 45 minutes. Present at the attorney-client session will be Mayor Harry Howe III, Vice Mayor Lang Sykes, Councilwoman Laura Moss, Councilmember Anthony Young, Councilmember Valziedan, City Attorney Wayne Kement, Assistant City Attorney Kara Hans, Assistant City Attorney Stephanie Best, Best Kavon, I'm sorry, Stephanie, City Manager James O'Connor, and a certified court reporter. At the conclusion of the closed attorney-client session, this public meeting will be reopened.
Hey, can you go upstairs?
Just for the people in the audience, we will be there for about 30 to 45 minutes. We will come back, and there won't be any public comment or any additional information. Is that correct?
That's right.
So there's not really a lot of value sticking around for your information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, guys.
Any other questions?
The official record doesn't contain that last part, and I don't even know who was speaking at that point.
There were, there were students in the audience who we told, we didn't think there was going to be anything going on. It was not part of the-
But the official record did not say anything about nobody coming back and taking a vote. He's, the mayor said specifically-
You just heard the mayor.
-the media would reconvene.
We were, we were reconvene, we told, we were students here waiting, and we said, "You're not going to have to wait here for 40 minutes."
Because you're going to come back, and you aren't going to do anything. There's going to be no, my goodness, you just heard it!
I don't even know which, which one of us said that.
Do you want me to play it again?
Not really.
So that you can hear it again?
It doesn't matter. It wasn't part of your official record.
Oh, my goodness. You told the public that you're going to come back, there's going to be nothing. Do you have, do you have a, on the public record, is there anything showing where you were going to make a motion and vote on this issue? Is there any public record showing that?
The only thing the public has to be noticed of is when there is a meeting, the time and the place. There doesn't have to be even an agenda.
You can just have a meeting and vote for anything you want. You don't have to give the public notice.
Absolutely.
Boy, am I glad you're leaving.
Sir, you need to go study the law and then come back and talk to us.
I'm glad you're leaving because you have an absurd-
I think what I need for you to do at this point in time is, instead of disrupting the meeting as you do on a regular basis, just take your seat.
Yeah. You don't like to be disrupted with the truth.
I don't like the way you operate, so just take your seat.
I don't care whether you like the way I operate or not. I don't like, I don't like attacks on the city clerk. I don't like you giving away our money. I mean, there's lots of things about you I don't like, but so what?
Well, and that's fine. We can agree to disagree, but you're disruptive. You're always disruptive. So have a seat. Save us all the heartache. Have a seat. All right. We're going to go along with the regular agenda, not Mr. Hetty's agenda, and we're going to move on to the discussion of the city clerk requested. Mr. Zidians, did you want to, we've run this over fairly well tonight. Did you want to continue with your request on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to make a statement because-
Okay, that's fine.
Actually, and I apologize, it's not as long, I don't think it's 10 minutes, but it's, I have an extended comment. Before I comment, I want to, I wanted to, on the city clerk's department, I wanted to put this into, this matter and other matters we have addressed over the last year into perspective regarding the duties of the city council. Why are we here? Specifically, what are we supposed to be doing as city council members, and what is our local government supposed to be doing? Simply put, I believe that our job is to determine what endeavors of our local government should be involved in, limit government to those activities that are appropriate, and then make sure that those limited government endeavors are done at the highest level of competence. They should all be done with emphasis on fiscal responsibility, keeping taxes low, and solving problems without wasting taxpayer money when possible. The misrepresentation of my motivations on these matters over the past year is frustrating but expected. It's natural for people to fear change and assume the worst-case scenario. It is human nature to do so. If you want to know my motivations, just ask me, or read some of the things that I have put in writing. I said it, I stated plainly in an op-ed early in 2017 in 32963, the year before I ran for city council. I've talked many times about there's a struggle between ever-expanding, bigger government and civil society. Civil society is everything non-government, private businesses, nonprofits, churches, individuals. Human problems are solved by one or the other, and there is a vacuum that will be filled. If one shrinks, the other expands and vice versa. I am fighting on the side of expanded civil society and shrinking government. You may or may not agree with me, but that's what I'm doing, and I'm not hiding it. The most significant issue with regard to this battle for our city has been Vero- The most significant issue with regard to this battle for our city has been Vera Electric. That was the whole reason why I ran. Next week, our community will start saving over $20 million per year by getting out of government electric. All of the opposition to this is by those who want to maintain a $5.4 million transfer to our general fund. Government was important, more important to them than the effect it had on individual citizens' lives. Same idea applies to the government swimming pool at Leisure Square, where as part of, as of the last report I read, 87 city residents were pool members, but the pool was subsidized at $200,000 a year. I don't think government-run pools are part of the core mission of our city. I'm not sorry that I brought that up, even though I could not convince others to get us out of the government pool business. Same concepts apply to River House, the dilapidated City Marina, as are not my words, that was someone else earlier tonight, the post office building, exploring parking solutions, Dodge Town Golf Course. There is no hidden agenda. There are just two questions. First is, do we belong in this business? The second is, if we do belong in this business, are we doing a good job? This brings us to the city clerk's office in our recent election. City council, city council does not supervise every employee. As a matter of fact, this city council only supervises three city employees, the three charter officers. They're the only ones who report to us. We don't, we cannot direct the, the police chief or anyone else to do anything in the city. If, um, the, the chief of police falls under the city manager, the city attorney and city clerk, and they each have their charter duties. City clerk does not report to the city manager. Um, it's our, it's the duty, this is our job of the city council, to determine whether we have confidence in the work done by all three of the charter officers. This is not personal. I actually, I very much like our city clerk. I think she's an incredibly pleasant person who's dedicated to our community. I respect her years of service. I very much respect everything she's done with working on the Centennial Committee. The question is not whether I like her or not. The question is whether I have confidence in her execution of her most important task. She really has two tasks. The two tasks are, um, the two main tasks are running our elections and maintaining our public records. And there has been much, much information, both in the media, in political columns in our paper, um, and, oh, on social media, and in, with just with everything that people is talking about with this issue. Um, the, the, I, I'm going to go through and just give a brief summary of what really happened as far as I understand it. And because the city, the public needs to know. When I put this on the agenda, I did not put on "Fire Tammy Clerk," Tammy Bersick for Clerk. I put on the agenda "Discussion of City Clerk Off-Department." And that's what I want to do. And, and we have to talk about this election because it's an embarrassment to our city that we, we had this problem. It, we had a, we had a, what I thought was a valid election, and then it got thrown out, all those people who went out and voted. And the, the public deserves to know what happened, why it happened, and then there has to be accountability. Um, and it started with, as far as I understand, on July 9th, Linda Hillman turning in her paperwork. And despite what you may have heard, I didn't go and steal it and switch it and change it. I was actually in London on July 9th and I'll find my plane ticket somewhere and show it to everybody. And I, I flew back to the U.S. that day. Got home late to Vera. Um, Linda Hillman claimed that she completed all her paperwork, um, but she didn't. The, in, from everything that I can tell. Three or four, four or five days later, three or four days later, it was posted by Tammy Bersick to our city website. Um, and there's time dates and timestamps and all that. There was no signature. Um, we heard earlier from Phyllis Frye that she, that she testified in her oath, and another witness testified under oath in front of Judge Canarac, that all the paperwork was signed, that she signed these documents. Um, that's interesting, too, because July 9th was more than a month before you could even turn in prequalifying documents. So even if it was true that she actually did sign and fill out those paperwork and turn it in, she still wouldn't have been a qualified candidate. Because the rule is, you have to, you have to qualify between 75 days and 60 days before an election. You can turn, our, 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 uh, law, our charter says that you can turn in the documents 14 days earlier. That puts the earliest date you could turn them in would be August 10. So even if she was telling the truth when she testified, um, it, it would not have qualified her for the election as far as I understand it. According, um, according to Ms. Hillman, our city clerk told her multiple ti, multiple occasions, all of her paperwork was complete and she was a qualified candidate. I take her at her word. On the following day of qualifying, um, which was, I believe, September 7th, our city clerk told all four qualified candidates, plus Linda Hillman and Brian Hetty, that they were qualified. And did the traditional drawing for the ballot order. The following Tuesday, uh, our city attorney, Wayne Coment, had, I believe, had told the two candidates who did not complete their qualifying paperwork in time, they could come in and sign those papers. After they did so, the city attorney then, after reviewing statutes, determined that it was not permissible and informed, uh, candidate Hetty and Hillman they were not qualified. The city clerk then notified the supervisor of election, who removed them from the ballot. After they moved from the ballot and after overseas ballots had been sent out, Linda Hillman sued the city of Vera Beach, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. After this, city canvassing board, city attorney, city clerk, um, and city, city clerk and city clerk and city manager met about three days later. The notice for that meeting was placed on our website. There was nothing put in the paper. I personally wasn't, I didn't even know there was a canvassing board meeting. Found out after the fact. Um, they voted at that meeting to put her back on the ballot. Uh, the, although they never stated at any point that she was a qualified candidate. As a matter of fact, um, well, now, I, I've heard a lot of stuff in the public about how the city council could have just fixed this and saved us a $25,000 election, all this. This, this had all passed before the city council. The city council does not run this lady clerk's department. The city clerk runs the city clerk's department. So the next scheduled city council meeting, this was after you could not cancel the, you could not, um, put the names back on the ballot. It was too late. Um, the city council had voted to, um, to not, uh, cancel the election and, and reschedule the election. It wouldn't have changed anything with, with the election happening on the 5th. It wouldn't have changed anything with the $25,000, the cost of a new election. Next city council meeting, after all the events, there was a notice on the agenda. Um, that, that's what I just said. It was voted for, 4-1 against a special election. Um, after, then there was a court hearing, um, in the Hillman lawsuit against the city of Vera Beach. And the judge issued an injunction, um, on November 5th. That was one day before the election. That injunction prevented, it didn't say that she won the case, it said that it prevented the certification until after Hillman, uh, Ms. Hillman got her day in court, which was scheduled December 17th. Um, and I already mentioned the, the testimony. Interestingly, in that, um, in that injunction, my understanding, and I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding is that, um, the judge was not, actually said in there that it's the responsibility of a candidate to complete their paperwork. That was not the reason for the injunction. My understanding is, as to the reason for the injunction was that the process had not been handled correctly by the city of Vera Beach, essentially by our city clerk and the canvassing board, which she was a member of. Um, also, I don't know whether or not, um, the, the testimony that, like, when a judge is told, but under oath, that someone completed a form, that, whether that would be sufficient evidence for them to believe that they will prevail in court, and that may have been the other reason that they, that he approved the injunction to give her her day in court. There are, as I said in the beginning, there are two primary duties of a city clerk: handle elections and keep public records. I'm personally not, and my job as a city council member is to supervise three employees. And if I'm not confident that someone is doing the job, if I'm not confident in them, then I can't support them. And that's all that I'm saying. Um, I, I am not confident in our city clerk. Um, this is the primary responsibility for, for our clerk, and it was not handled properly. Um, that's my opinion.
Uh, Wayne, quick question. Because we're having a discussion tonight, we're not going to make a motion on anything tonight. Um, and we've been through the, uh, public comments so much already. Is this something that we, we need to bring up public comment again or?
No, it's up to the council.
Council discussion?
It'd be up to the council.
Because I don't think any of us-
Unless you're going to be taking action.
I don't know that we will, but if we do, we'll take public comment. So.
I had no, I, I had no plan, as I said, and, and was quoted in the paper correctly, uh, that I had no intention of firing anyone, and that was not the process of this. But I think we need to have a discussion. And I think we should discuss whether, um, I am alone in my lack of confidence in our city clerk, or whether there are other people who don't feel confident in her ability, not as a person. And, and hearing everyone talk tonight, I have this, I believe it. I believe that Tammy is a wonderful, good person who is giving, and, and that's not what this is about. This is about, do we have confidence in the, the role as a, um, as a city clerk?
Yeah, I, um, I'd like to say something, if I may. This is not about opinion. It's not about the council's opinion, any of us, or even anyone in the audience. This is a matter of law. It is absolutely a matter of law. And it's interesting that we were just speaking earlier about the Marina, section 5.05, and how much we want to stick to the law with that. Well, the law stands behind Tammy, as do I. I stand behind the law. And anybody who stands behind the law is going to stand behind Tammy. The law is, in this regard, and this has to do with qualifying papers, the law is that the qualifying papers are the responsibility of the candidate, not the clerk. The clerk is not responsible. That's it. That's the law. And it really doesn't matter about anybody's opinion. It's a matter of law. And I'm going to take a moment to read to you what the judge said. This was at the hearing of October 24th. It's on page 113, which I have uploaded to the internet. And this is Judge Canarac speaking. "I agree that ultimately it is the candidate's responsibility. They can't say, 'Well, I didn't really know,' or 'Somebody didn't tell me.'" It is ultimately the candidate's responsibility. That's the law, and that is reflected in what the judge said, the law. And what you really want to read, every single person in this room and every single person in the city, is not the, the short minutes that Mr. Hetty was so concerned about, but you need to read this, which only became available, to my knowledge, today. I only got it today. It's about 60-something pages. It's double-spaced. It's very easy to read. This, these are the minutes of the private meeting that we had. It is a public document, so you will know exactly who said what, when. I begged, I begged the city council to follow the law, which I just stated. They did not. We came back here, and what happened was that Council, Vice Mayor Sykes made a motion for a special election. Mayor Howell seconded it, and Councilwoman Tony Young was the swing vote for a special election. There is no basis in law to have a special election. This should have gone to trial. And you will read in these minutes why. Because the judge would have decided in her, in our favor, because it's the law, and, you know, the judge is not going to break the law. And if the judge did break the law, we would have appealed because, guess what? It wouldn't just affect Tammy. It wouldn't just become Tammy's job. It would go county-wide. It would affect every single city. And that's right here. I'll tell you, I'll quote again, this is our city attorney, uh, Ms. Hance, saying, "I want to emphasize that the precedent," and now we're talking about the judge, "if the judge had decided to, um, you know, had decided in Ms. Hillman's favor, we would have had to appeal." Okay? We would have been bound to appeal because it would have been wrong. The judge would have been breaking the law." This is Ms. Hance speaking. This is not me. I'm quoting, it's on page 21, Ms. Hance. "But again, I want to emphasize that the precedent of the judge making, we're not just the city of Vera Beach, but it would be for all of Indian River County, that the applicant wouldn't have a responsibility to make sure everything is done. So based on that, we would have to appeal it." There you go. Read this. It's only 60-something pages. It really, it doesn't matter what anybody's opinion is. The law stands behind Tammy Bersick. She did her job. It was not her responsibility, it was the candidate's responsibility. That's it. This council, three people on this council, I don't know that I should say broke the law, but they certainly disregarded the law by moving forward with a special election that has no basis in law. And if you want to take it a step further, read the minutes of that campus board meeting, where the basis in law for their decision to add people back on the ballot was, quotes, "confusion." Confusion is not a basis in law. All right? And if we want to keep this beautiful place that we have, we need to obey the law all of the time. With the Marina, that's section 5.05, and with this. It is the responsibility of the candidate, that's the law, and we need to follow it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Young, you had something to say?
Our card. Yeah? Yeah.
And by the way, I will ask the city clerk to upload this tomorrow so that everyone has access to it. You won't have to go looking for it. Um, it's a, it's a very fast read. I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's fine. Our current, um, circumstance, the city has settled with the suit. Finding blame is not constructive. Fixing the system addresses the issue. Mayor Howell's priorities are correct. Let's move forward. Continuing the acrimony only causes more havoc. Things could have been done better on both parts. The whole scenario is regrettable. What's this uproar we're hearing? It was a city decision to move for a special election. This is only one part of Tammy's job. It does not dictate the magnitude of action that's being discussed. I spent 30 years in the Army. You don't court-martial a person for a reprimand injury. The cost of a pump house roof, which we would have addressed on the consent agenda, would have been almost as much as this election. The mistake fails to reflect her demonstrated record of service and her decades of service. The action to vote no confidence for Ms. Bersick would be a horrible precedent. And the consequences would have severe impact on our city activities and services. Quite simply, we need to recommend a way forward. Update the city ordinance. Review the supervisor of elections procedures, the counties, which is being done. Implement a candidate class, okay, which this, the county does. Update file management procedures, novel idea. Implement file transparency procedures. Specify updated document safeguards. We need a chain of custody, novel idea. Examine the city canvassing board procedures. Revive process, revise process and time to complete filing and forward ballot information to the Indian River Supervisor of Elections. Require challenges to the eligibility a candidate be documented. A certificate of qualification should be completed by the city following closing and prior to notifying the county of the names placed on the ballot. Procedures for removing names should be clearly delineated. And specify the role of the canvassing board. As Mayor- As Mayor Howell has said, let's move on.
Is that it?
No, it's not it.
Okay. No, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Surprising conduct, reckless, mean-spirited, unprofessional, caustic, toxic, those are things that have been said. The impact of his, of the assault on Ms. Bersick, in my eyes, is absolutely reprehensible. Threats can be perceived, okay? It can be perceived. It may not be intentional. It may be unintentional. But the fact is, threats can be and are perceived. How the decision of the city council majority can be subverted by what I consider as personal hubris is stymying. Tammy Bersick represents the very best. Her record of service has been consistently lauded, and to stoop to some of the machinations that we have seen in public is beyond the pale. Am I outraged? You're damn right I am. I've worked alongside her in person for two years, in observation for eight years. To have her, by virtue of what we have done, whether intentional or not, makes her the And that's a scapegoat for a poor showing by the city and others. And I consider it a target shift. It's a public disgrace for her service. It's a lack of regard for the reputation and the dedication of others. It's not consistent with the years of service. You know, I could continue on. But I think what the public has seen, and what is so disconcerting, whether intentional or not, is part and parcel to the fear and discouragement spoken about by Alma Lee Loy. And I see victims in the tracks. And if I were to vote on an issue of confidence today, I would vote that I had lost confidence, not in Tammy Bersick, but another council member. With 30 years of service, as 30 years of service, I'm a pretty damn good judge. Were I a commander, I'd relieve him. Thank you.
I just want to add two points quickly. One, it's my understanding that the city manager and staff are already working on revisions similar to the ones that Councilmember Young mentioned, to how we're going to handle elections moving forward. And those should be available, I would think, shortly, certainly by the next meeting.
Kara, out of the city attorney's office is working on that.
Yep. And then, second, I just wanted to add that it's very evident in the minutes of the special call meeting that, you know, and I'll only speak for myself, my decision to make a motion for not only the settlement, which obviously contained the call for a special election, was based on the advice of our in-house counsel. I'm not an attorney. So, yeah, I defer to those who know the law. And while I respect Councilwoman Moss very much, you know, perhaps it would have been prudent to bring someone else in outside if we thought it was going to be any sort of violation. So, that's my opinion. And I think at the end of the day, I think it's an unfortunate debacle, really, is the best word. It's been used a lot tonight. It's a black eye on the city of Vero Beach. And in my opinion, this was the best way for us to move forward, heal the city, and move on and focus on the business that the citizens expect us to conduct. So, thank you.
Did you want to say anything, Harry? Or I will?
I'll let you go then.
Okay. I'm going to return to my theme. Obey the law, because look what happens when you don't obey the law. Innocent people get hurt. We all know that. We all see that with a lot of different things. And it's interesting to me, sitting here, that on the one hand, you have, you know, Tammy becomes a scapegoat for one side, and Dr. Zudans becomes a scapegoat for the other. That doesn't speak well of any of us, because we should just be following the law. And the council should not have voted if they were following the law. This council, and that's Mr. Sykes, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Young, should not have voted for a special election if they were following the law, or not following the law. That's the problem.
But Ms. Moss, you were in the room with the rest of us.
There should be no personal attacks, and everyone will read what I said tomorrow, I hope. Don't forget. Tammy's going to upload it tomorrow. It became available only today. But everyone should know exactly what was said. And we need to follow the law, and we're not. So what other laws? And I said this, the Press Journal quoted me at the very beginning, I said this, that city council is cherry-picking which laws we're going to stand behind and which ones we're not. And watch out, because it's going to come back to bite you with the Marina or some other issue. And it's like, well, if you don't follow the law with this, then, I don't know, maybe we won't follow that Section 5.05 either, you know? So we all need to take this very seriously. I know it's hard not to make it personal, like we have to, you know, we have to, and we're looking for somebody to blame. We need to follow the law. And this majority city council did not do that. There should... We don't need a special election. We need a majority city council that follows the law. That's what we need. So please, everyone, tomorrow, read it. That's the law. You'll see it. You can check with any attorney, and he will tell you the same thing.
Was it not the advice of council to move forward with the settlement?
I'm not going to speak about them, because, look, they're concerned about their jobs. It's the same thing we just dealt with earlier, with the police pension. They're not, they're concerned about their jobs. I'm not going to put them on the spot that way. You know, they'd be afraid to say otherwise. But what was said in here was that if the judge did decide to disregard the law, that Ms. Hance said she would be obligated to file an appeal. It's in here. You can read it, if you don't recall that specifically.
I do.
Right, right. And you especially were concerned about this, that it's... I remember you said, and it's in here, that it's responsibility of the candidate, because you've run for higher office, and you were saying how important it is. And think about it, really. That's only logical, all right? It should be the responsibility of the candidate. That's logical. And for once, the law's logical, too. Wow! You know? It should be the responsibility of the candidate, not the clerk. It's not up to the clerk, it's up to the candidate.
And I don't disagree with that, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it was prudent to follow the legal advice of the people that we put our confidence in, not to mention the fact that this was the most expedient way to overcome this issue. And it was council's advice that the likelihood of winning the case was very low, and we would have had to appeal, as you're correct in stating, which would have dragged this out for who knows how long.
You know... If we had gone to trial, the judge, you know, that's fine, but that's making the assumption that the judge would have decided against us, and I doubt that. I just read you what the judge said. The judge himself said it's the candidate's responsibility. So you cannot assume that the judge would have decided against the city.
What we're doing, though, is we're on a topic in regards to the city clerk, okay? And the decision was made to move forward with the settlement, okay? The majority of us on the council agreed, in the interest of the city, to move forward in the settlement. And I read, what you've read as well there, and what was discussed was that, in the total context of the case, it was anticipated that the judge would rule in her favor. In light of that, it was felt that the city would benefit by us moving on and having a special election. Now, we agree that neither one of us, neither one of the parties, would be at fault. And it was brought up in the context as well, is likely that the final results would probably be the same. So, in this discussion about the city clerk, the law has, or the law, justice has been completed by our decision as a city council to move forward. It's an open conversation that we're having here. I'm not using the good doctor as a scapegoat. I'm just stating what I see to be a matter that is brought to the agenda and openly discussed. So, you know, we don't need to be re... What do you want? Re-arguing the settlement, because that has been done.
Well, that's the point, isn't it? If we follow the law, we don't need scapegoats. We don't need scapegoats on either side if we stay with the law. Then we're all set. Let me say one other thing, which does not have to do with the transcript, because everybody can read this.
Your side tonight, your opinion.
Your votes, no, this I haven't said yet, your votes are the votes that go in the dumpster, all right? Your votes are gone. And you're the ones, you're going to pay the $25,000 for the special election. So your votes are in the dumpster, and you're going to be charged $25,000. It's coming out of your wallet for this special election. And we can't recreate it. You had 66% turnout at that last election, not because of city council, although I'd love to think that, but it's not because of city council. It was a midterm election that was the highest percentage for Indian River County since 1994, turnout. So you're not going to have that turnout. And, well, guess what? We're not going to have early voting. There's no early voting. I mean, it's not going to, it's not even going to be close to being the same election.
And to your point, we might even have a different highest vote getter as well.
It's not going to be the same election.
I just want to...
That's a fact. I don't know what will happen beyond that. I'm just, I'm trying to stick to the facts.
I just want to go back to Congressman... Congressman Young, you've been promoted.
I heard the words assault, threat, and personal hubris. I said, "I personally do not have confidence in someone who's working for our city." That's not an assault, that's not a threat, and that's not personal hubris.
Colonel Young?
You want me to? Can I? I mean, and I'll make it quick and short. I've been up here longer than anybody on the board at this point. I'm not the longest council member in the history of Vero Beach, but I'm also now mayor, so y'all probably expect me to say something, and you probably expect it to be profound.
And we know you too well.
Right. That's right. I typically don't have a problem with words, finding words, making, trying to help people understand. In this particular situation, I am, I can tell you, I'm exhausted, and I know for different reasons Tammy is, too, but I'm exhausted. I mean, not only am I physically exhausted, I'm mentally exhausted, because, you know, Councilman Zudans has every right to bring this topic to discussion today. And I hate to see that citizens or other members demonize him for doing that, because there's nothing wrong with having the discussion. We should discuss things, and we should do it in a way that is civil. And I like the fact that we're talking about this. As long as somebody wants to talk about it, we should talk about it, without demonizing anyone. I was asked not too long ago, I told, you know, I was asked, Tammy knows up, I'm a straight shooter. Tammy wanted to know, you know, "Do you have confidence in me?" And I said, "Honestly, Tammy, the first thing out of my mouth when I heard, I was out of town, and when I heard what was going on, was I would fire somebody if it cost my business $25,000." But that was my first reaction. Moving on, I was also asked, "Do you think her job's in jeopardy?" Well, what I said was, "Yes, it could be, because I don't know what the..." I think I have a different idea, opinion about that now, but I don't know what the council's attitude is going to be toward this. And all it would take is three votes. So, yeah, at that point in time, certainly there was jeopardy. But I can also, I can also tell you all this, having been here as long as I have, and I think this is my, it's my 12th or 13th year with the city, I don't know which, Tammy's been here all the time, and I can't say that she's ever done anything malicious or malign to me. And I want to, I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking on behalf of Tammy. And if there's anybody that wants to speak on behalf of Val or anybody else, I would welcome that also. Don't laugh. I'm serious. I hate that you're not able to bring this up without being demonized, but I like having the conversation. And so, and then Colonel Young's right as well. And, you know, we have a member, we have a five-member group, three voted for, two against, end of story. That's the way it is. I am sick and tired of contentious items tearing us all apart. And so, you know, I just, can't we all just get along? I just, I really, I really am. So, no, I don't have anything profound, I don't have anything profound to say this evening. I wish that I did, but, you know, I think it's good that we all know where we stand at this point in time. And who did I interrupt? Was it Councilman Young? Go right ahead. We're not having public comment right this second. No, ma'am. No, you may not. Yes, sir.
If you, if you look at the impact, I mean, in a perfect world, we could say we want to discuss individuals, whether we have faith or not, in their performance. And it would not be interpreted as a threat to their livelihood, because literally, the implications, like you said, we didn't know what way this body was going to go. It takes three votes. Three votes to end a person's livelihood. If they're a city manager, if it's a city clerk, who's the third one? Anyway, who's the third?
City attorney.
Or attorney, okay? So, you know, to toss out an agenda item that says, "I want to talk about the city clerk's business," and then go and ask for a resolution, okay, or a draft of a resolution, speaking to the, you know, whether, you know, we have confidence in a person's abilities or not, is alarming to me, because in my background, a simple vote of no confidence means end of service. So I hope people realize, at least on my part, maybe I overreacted, but I overreacted because of the basis of my experience. And, you know, again, for me, to see somebody that has done such exceptional performance and realize, yes, okay, we will have to do a special election, but, you know, again, in the larger scope of performance, that didn't raise to the level that would jeopardize a person's career. And maybe I'm just blowing it all out of proportion, and if I am, I apologize to you, to Dr. Zudans and Harry and all y'all, so...
No apologies necessary. We all have the right to our opinion. Is there any other discussion on this matter this evening?
No, just, as I said, I'll ask Tammy to upload this tomorrow, and I hope that everyone will take the opportunity to read it. That's the minutes of the shade, I don't know why, it's a shade meeting, private meeting. That's it.
Tammy, you going to upload that tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to city council election 2018, requested by Councilwoman Moss.
Well, I think we've covered it.
I think we've covered it.
I think we've covered that, and we've covered the Marina. I just put information down. I'll wait till everyone leaves, so, quiet. I just put information down, I'll wait till everyone leaves, so, quiet. I put information down about the Marina, just points of information, because we had Mr. Druid coming in, and that's why I was asking to move it forward, so that we could discuss it at that time. But anyway, I do thank him, I appreciate what he did, it's very thoughtful. I've already stated my opinion, you can watch the videos, they're uploaded as part of this agenda. I've already stated my opinion about the Marina, that it should stay in city hands, that I would like the city to run it, if that's doable. We talked about debt service at the last meeting and it being one of the primary concerns. And the other primary concern about the Marina was Section 5.05. Here we are, back to the law. So, as I said earlier, we have to be really careful, follow the law. Don't cherry pick laws, what you're going to stand behind and what you're not going to stand behind. So, I'm fine with that. This is all available, by the way, for anyone in the community who is not aware. The city website is covb.org, cityofvero beach dot org. Base page will come up, on the lower left is an icon that says Agenda. Click on that, short scroll down to City Council, and all of this is uploaded, so it makes it easy for you. Section 5.05 actually was uploaded, it's there, and these are just short clips from the Marina meeting. For anyone who is coming to the story, the Marina story, shall we say, a little bit late, the information is there. And that's it. Anything else to say about that?
So, moving on to public hearings, site plan application for Preston Estates.
Yes, we have our new planning director, Jason Jeffries, here tonight, and he will go through the two applications and the votes of the planning commission.
Mayor, do you have the quasi judicial procedure in front of you?
I do not. Not a far, thank you. I did not.
Yes, he does.
Now I do. Did I already read the dotted orders?
I don't know, I was just sitting here.
Yeah.
Oh, Lord.
Preston Estates, is that what we're talking about?
Jason, do you want to handle both of them at the same time, but take two separate votes?
I think we're going to take them separately, but I'm going to do, on the presentation of the first one, I'm going to do the most comprehensive and be brief in the second one. But we got, my understanding is we want to handle them separately.
Okay, well, let's do this, then. This is, first, the first thing we need to do is have disclosure of council members of ex parte communications. Has anybody had any ex parte communications?
Negative.
No.
Not that I know of.
Okay, so, and we will, we're in the city planner now.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to announce the exhibits, all diagrams, photographs, everything. So, Wayne, this is totally different than having two attorneys up here. Guys in the back of the room, if we could just keep it down just a little bit back there, sorry, thank you, appreciate it. Anyway, so, let's have, let's have you.
I'll do the staff for our presentation.
It's hard to hear, could we just, you know, clear the back hall or something? I'm having trouble hearing.
You want to clear the lobby?
Just make it a little quieter, maybe they can whisper. Really, I can't hear. Or you can shout, either they can whisper or you can shout.
I'll speak into the microphone.
Thank you, I want to hear every word you say. I'm hanging on every word.
Sure. Are we ready?
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. What I've handed out is, because of the technical issues, usually I would have a PowerPoint, but I hand it out in front of you, you should have the printed copy of the PowerPoint, and I'm going to go through that. Just to kind of give you some background, I know this is, yes, that item.
Got it.
This is a unique request for the city of Vero Beach, and I know there were some issues at Planning Board, and so I think what I want to do is just go through a presentation to give you some background on what this request is. This is a preliminary plat approval for a 55-lot residential development.
Can I interrupt for one second? I think I might have seen this one, has this been around for a while? I think I saw this when I was on Planning and Zoning a long time ago, so.
You probably have.
Do I have to, I don't have to recuse myself or anything because of that?
No.
Now, because you asked if I'd seen anything about it, now I forgot that I, I actually did.
It has been in revisions several.
No, I'm looking at the pictures.
Yeah, I believe, we, this, technically, we consider this a new request.
Okay.
But the same parcel has had a previous.
Started out in Southampton?
Yes. Now, it's considered Preston Estates. Anyway, so, it's, this is a preliminary plat, it's associated with a site plan, which is number SP 18002. It's 54 duplex units and one detached residential unit, and the location is at 1205 and 1245 11th Avenue. The Planning Board did recommend three to two for approval of this. This is a public hearing for the site plan and preliminary plat, and under the major subdivision review process. This is a platted over, it's considered a platted over subdivision, a platted over subdivision, which has certain requirements, and I'll go through those in detail. As I stated, the location of this item is on the south side, near, at the corner of 12th Street and 12th Avenue. It's about seven acres. Some of the, there are residential neighborhoods to the west of the site and to the south. To the east is a commercial corridor, so this particular request is a pretty good transitional use from the commercial uses to the east of the site, to the residential, more residential uses to the west. The platted over subdivision process, this is a unique, this is a different process that has been added to the subdivision regulations in 2013. So, it's not your typical, where you take raw land and subdivide it for the first time. This is actually where you're doing a new subdivision over what has been previously subdivided. It basically allows for the orderly plating of the duplex or townhome subdivisions. So, previous to 2013, the city didn't really have that process. Staff at the time was revising these subdivision regulations, added this process in for the plating of public duplex and townhome subdivisions where they're permitted in those particular zoning districts. The process is to follow the major subdivision process, has a preliminary plat, a final plat, and public hearings at those times. At the same time that there is a, this subdivision is coming through the review process, we have this associated site plan, which is what the first item you're hearing. It is under the site plan that it provides specific guidelines for the interior development. So, the exterior of the development, the perimeter lot lines follow the setback requirements of the zoning district, but allows the flexibility in the interior for the development of furniture requirements, setback, lot sizes, dimensions, and the location of the structures, as if it was like an apartment complex, but except you can plat individual lots. So, it just provides the flexibility in that area, but has to follow certain guidelines. The process, since this does include a site plan, it did have to have, and it's a major site plan, it had to have the neighborhood meeting, which was held. There was an application review by staff. Staff has found it meets all the conditions, requirements within the Land Development Code. There was a Planning Board review of the preliminary plat and site plan, which was held, I believe, in October. City Council, and then now what we're before you is the city council preliminary plat. As with any subdivision, they'll go do their construction plans, and then city council will approve the final plat once those are completed. And those will come back to you with another public hearing. The future land use for this site is residential medium, which allows this density of, medium density of projects up to eight units per acre. The zoning is RM8, which again follows the same, is consistent with that land use destination. The site plan itself for this particular project, as I mentioned before, is proposing a duplex and a single-family development. It's permitted, this is a permitted use in the RM8 zoning district. The density of this particular property, which is 7.8 acres, which would allow up to 63 units, the applicant is proposing 55 units, so they are within the density requirements of the site. The FAR, the floor area ratio, allows a maximum .3. This is proposed, this development's proposed at .29. The land per unit, the code requires 5,000 square feet. The proposed development is requiring 6,242, so they meet that requirement. And as I stated before, the perimeter setbacks for the front yard are adjacent to street are 25 feet, they meet those requirements, and the side yard, which are, what's adjacent to the cemetery, which is to the north, and the commercial developments to the east, those setbacks are 20 feet. And the interior setbacks, this being a duplex development, they're going to have typical developments of common walls where the two buildings join, and then on the outer side, there'll be 10-foot building separation.
I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe I'm, you know, I'm a novice at this, but the, it says the 5,000 square foot land per unit, right?
Right, for duplex. Staff had reviewed it under multifamily, which I think requires 5,400, but these are duplex units.
Okay, and I'm looking at the duplex units, the square footage that's on the, on the, just right here.
Right.
And I don't come up with 5,000, you know, I mean.
For the, no, no, they-
That's the building.
Yeah. The 5,000 is the overall land, so you just take the overall square footage of the land of the site and divide it by the number of units, that's where you come up with the 6,000. The actual building sizes, square footage of the buildings will be, I think, around 1,300, 1,500 square feet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then also in your package, just for me to wrap up, you have the subdivision layout, the site plan, that's part of your package before you, and then you have the building architectural elevations. So, as staff, as your planning director, I have reviewed, even though I wasn't part of the whole review process, I did go back, review everything that was done by staff previous to my coming on board, and I do recommend approval of this site plan and preliminary plat. So, I think your first action, as a quasi judicial hearing, is to approve the site plan, and then the preliminary plat will follow behind it.
Do you have any witnesses to call?
Well, I think the applicant would like to speak.
That's fine. Let me ask you a question before he does. And I realize that you've only been here a short time, so maybe this is an unfair question, but this strikes me as something that's atypical from what we normally would have to, or meet for an approval. Would that be a correct statement?
Yeah, I think what this is, is it's an infill development. It's very common to what I did up in the city. I was previously, where they did PD developments, but instead, what staff did is they came up with a way to do this through a pro, through an application process without having to do a PD.
And he's asking why it's coming here, not just to planning and zoning?
Yes, and that's what's unusual, is because it, this is a subdivision that includes a plat with a recorded street. And when you plat, it said we still had some undeveloped land in the city, and you were going to plat a street, I understand, like, there's some empty, there's some vacant land on the west side of the city near the airport. When they go to plat that, a major subdivision plat where you're recording or dedicating a new street would come back to city council. So, that is very, that is part of the process.
They approve all subdivisions.
Right, they approve.
It's a subdivision, you approve all subdivisions.
Right.
The land, the land to the north of this area.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, as an example, you know, there's not much undeveloped land in the city, large tracts like you have out in the county. So, that's where I think this is unusual for the city, to see a subdivision plat like this. We have, we do have several plats, and I'll just bring that up as a reference, like that, I believe there's some undeveloped land to the west of the airport that was a former golf course, there has been development proposals in the past, that would potentially, you know, that would be a subdivision that would come to the city. Anytime land is being subdivided and it involves a dedication of a street, by the code, it has to come to city council.
Okay.
Is that, is that the question you want to ask?
Yeah. Basically, in essence, you answered the question, because I wanted to know, and we can talk about this more, but what I really want to know is the lot line allowance and, you know, how much room they're giving between each home, if that's different than what we typically would approve. Does the applicant want to give his presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Bruce Barquette, I'm representing the applicant for Preston Estates. You approve all subdivisions.
One moment, I'm sorry.
And just to be clear, if Mr. Barquette is not testifying as a fact witness, he doesn't have to be sworn in, so that's his choice.
Yeah, well, you are going to be a fact witness, aren't you?
No, I'm going to, no, not really.
Okay.
No, I'm a lawyer, I'm giving you the law. We're going to follow the law.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to follow. Yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, the law is, basically, you look at this to see if it meets your site plan requirements, and it does, because your site plan requirements only, in this case, involve the exterior setbacks and the other open space and parking and drainage and all that. And your, the evidence before you is that it does comply with that. The reason it comes before you is because you also have jurisdiction, you review all subdivision plats, you give approval for preliminary plat, and then after it's platted, after it's built, you give approval for the final plat. So, this is a combination site plan and plat, so that's why it's coming before you. But no, I don't have anything to add, I mean, Mr. Jeffries gave a very thorough and complete explanation of the project. I'm here to answer questions. I've got the engineer, Mr. Wesley Mills, here to answer any questions, if you have any, if there are any concerns, we'll address them.
I do, I don't know if anybody else does.
Not in a moment.
Okay.
Shall I, shall I forge ahead?
We want the engineer to get up.
You want to get the engineer?
Yeah.
Let's get you, let's get.
Well, I'll tell you what they are.
I'll take them until they get tough.
I'll tell you what they are, and then you can decide.
Let's get him sworn in, just in case the question pertains to something that he's going to answer.
Okay.
Yeah, let's let him, yes, sir. Come up and get yourself sworn in, if you don't mind, at the podium. Yes, sir.
You don't want to make your evening worth a wait.
Please state your name for the record.
Wesley Mills.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. Ms. Moss.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Actually, these are, I'm looking at the minutes of the planning and zoning meeting where this was discussed, and Mr. Jeffries, well, they voted on it. It was, they had, for the community, the planning and zoning board had, they had a quasi judicial meeting. The vote was three to two, and there are three comments that were made by the planning and zoning board that I think should be of concern to city council. So, I'm just reading from the minutes of the planning and zoning board meeting, quasi judicial, from November 1st, and this is on page five, and this is Mr. Carroll speaking, he's a member of the planning and zoning. And I'll read the part that makes sense, because I don't want to, I don't want to read too much, but I'll read this into the record. And he's talking about this piece of property and the plan for it. He said that he has seen these subdivisions in Dade County, Broward County, and Collier County, and they are a mess because there is not enough parking. He said, "There is not enough parking on this site to allow for visitors." We have had parking problems like we can't believe, so whoever is, whoever is capable of commenting on this in a real way, this is, parking is absolutely a concern to this council.
Okay, yes, ma'am, I'll comment on it. You don't have parking problems west of town, this is private property, it's a subdivision that meets your parking requirements, that's the law. I mean, that's all there is to it. Single-family homes, you don't have to have public parking in a single-family subdivision. We're not providing public parking, that's a fact, so.
So, no, but he's talking about visitors, so the people who live here is, so there's no, is he correct, that there would be no parking for visitors?
No, he's not correct, there's driveways.
He's not correct.
No, I mean, there's, he's not correct in that, I don't know exactly how much space you need for parking, but whatever space you need, we comply with under your code. And it's for single-family homes, there's no public parking required for a single-family subdivision.
So, this is just, like, from being on planning and, were you on planning and zoning before?
No, I was on utilities commission.
Okay, so, on planning and zoning, being on there, when we, when this is a quasi judicial hearing and we're having them come in, the way that, the way that we're supposed to, this is my understanding, and the attorney can verify this is true or not, we're supposed to say, we're supposed to basically find out from our planning and zoning director, does this meet the rules? Even if we don't agree that there should be shared parking over on the beach, or something like that, if it agrees with the rules, you can't just take someone's private property away from them and say, "I don't want you to do it because I don't like your plan." They're really, the only question for us, we're acting, quasi judicial means we're acting like judges, we're supposed to follow the law. And what we're supposed to do is say, "Did it meet all the criteria?" So, that's really the questions that we're supposed to be asking, not, "Hey, my friend saw something down in Dade County where they didn't have enough parking." That's not what the law says, is that?
That's true. Plus, they have two-car garages and a driveway.
Well, that's actually what I was asking, I do understand, we had a quasi judicial hearing before your-
Yes, ma'am, but you're quoting from the people.
This is before Councilman Zudans was on this council.
All fairness, you're quoting from the people that voted against it. If you really want to know what the planning and zoning board is, you should quote from the people that voted for it. It was approved, don't forget.
Right.
Well, let's not forget either, we have, and I'm saying, this is, this is whether you agree with it or not, because this is an instance in which I don't agree. you agree with it or not, because this is an instance in which I don't agree. We have a restaurant on Ocean Drive across from Bobby's that I think should never, ever, ever have been there, and the only reason that it's there is because it fell within our ordinance and codes.
We, we voted for it. We had to. It increased the parking problem.
But this isn't a restaurant situation. This is just a private subdivision.
And it's a, and that's not my point. My point is that this is acceptable under our current codes and regulations.
Yeah. That was my question. So you, so you answered it. The next point was, and again, this is from the minutes of this meeting on November 1st, they're saying that there is no room at Vero Beach High School for more students, but there is room at Sebastian River High School. So the children would have to attend Sebastian River High School even though they live in Vero Beach. Is that, do, would you know about that? Is that correct?
Well, I know that we got a certificate from the school board that it meets concurrency for schools.
I'm, I'm sorry, you got a certificate that went?
From the school board. We got a school board approval of concurrency.
Okay. So the school board approved it. Did Mr. Jeffries want to comment?
I'm going to take for that. Yeah, I looked into this, the, there is a, as part of the review process, we have to do concurrency on several issues involve, including the school district, and the school district did provide conditional concurrency, which is part of the process. That's all we have, all they have to do is provide conditional concurrency during the site plan approval process, and that was provided. There is an issue, as they identified, that the high school is at capacity, but this is a snapshot of concurrency of right now. So by the time this gets constructed, you know, that situation could change. So that's why the school district did provide concurrency.
Okay. So the school district has approved it?
Yeah.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you. And the final one, it actually is someone who voted yes for this, and remember, again, it passed three to two, so he voted in favor of it. But this is, and I'm, again, I'm reading from the minutes, "He felt that this should be referred to city council." He all, and this is, this is directly from the minutes. He quotes, "He also feels there is a problem with code language, which he finds very confusing." He said that he has to yield to the experts and to the planning and development department to interpret it for him, and he doesn't like being in that position. He said that he is not happy about the density and understands there is a transition taking place between very low-density commercial and very low-density single-family. But he understands it falls within the code, but he has a personal concern about it, and that's from page 10. Is there something, first, is, is he correct? Does it fall within the code? And secondly, and this probably has to do with Mr. Jeffries, is there something that we need to clarify or change or make less confusing in some way?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Jeffries talk about whether he needs to change the code, but it's...
Yeah, it's not time to do it.
Pardon me?
I'm saying perhaps there is, but this is not the time, nor does it apply.
But just to address the...
No, we don't have to change it tonight. I didn't mean to imply that.
But just to address the density, I mean, it's simple math. 7.88 acres times eight is 63. We're only putting in 55 units. So density-wise, we're basically 15% below what we're permitted.
What you're allowed to have.
That's simple math.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So let's get through the quasi judicial part of this, and...
I'm done.
So we have any rebuttals? Anybody? Any, either party know rebuttals? Okay. So let me then, any more discussion from council on the matter?
I don't have any other questions.
Sure. Okay. Well, then, we'll make a motion.
Public, public hearing.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Kind of rushed through here, right? It's public, public hearing. So any members of the public?
Good eve.
Good evening.
Good evening. What, for record, uh...
My name is Millet DeAngelis, and I'm not yet a member of, resident of Vero Beach. But being someone who recently graduated college, I do find it difficult to find medium-income level housing in this area, and I just wanted to come and show that I was very interested to hear about this, and it was a development I thought very promising for my own situation. So I just wanted to show my interest in approval for it, if that means anything.
It does. It does. Absolutely. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
You're honored. God bless.
Any other members of the public to speak on this matter?
Sure you still want to come here after the...
Robust dialogue.
Okay. So no more, uh, council, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion. I move the...
Motion.
Huh?
Motion.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion. I move that based on the competent substantial evidence presented and the applicable code provisions, we grant the application and adopt the ordinance as proposed.
Second.
It, it's actually to approve the site plan as proposed.
To approve the site plan as proposed. Second.
You got it. One from Tony.
Okay. Roll call.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Pass this five to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, you have the public hearing on the plat.
Yeah, we'll have the public hearing on the plat. That's all we have to do, Wayne, is just have a public hearing on the plat? Nothing else?
Well, no, it's the same process again. You have to start with Jason again.
Jason? After you, sir.
Well, I'll just, this is, as a follow-up to the previous item...
Remember, you're still under oath.
I'm still under oath.
Don't tell Eli.
This is the preliminary plat approval that corresponds to the previous site plan, if there's any questions.
None here. Applicant?
None.
Any witnesses? No rebuttal? Any public, any comments from the public on the matter?
He still wants to move here.
What?
He still wants to move here.
Okay, yeah. Good. Good. So any discussion from council? Did I say?
None.
None? Okay. Then I will make a motion, and I move that based on the competent substantial evidence presented and applicable code provisions, we...
Approve the preliminary plat.
To the what?
Approved the preliminary plat application.
Preliminary plat application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay. B, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, establishing a special assessment lien in the amount of $4,345 for a septic tank affluent pump system to serve the real property located at 524 Live Oak Road, Vero Beach, Indian River County, Florida, providing for an effective date requested by the water and sewer director.
As you know, this is another installation of a step system program in which we're sort of financing it over time, according to the ordinance and by law.
524 Live Oak Road.
Any discussion from council?
None.
Any public comment?
Probably not.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say I'm, I'm on my list. I'm not going to come and get a lien, though. I'm, I'm looking forward to getting into the step system.
You're gonna do it in...
Oh, yeah, we're talking right now.
Good.
Good. I'm just excited to let everyone know, since we're on this subject.
Well, I will...
And it's getting late, and we're getting punchy at 8:30. Yeah, we are.
I got on the step system, and it really is good. It's one of those things that nobody should have a septic tank to worry about collapsing in their front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm right next to the lagoon, too, so I'm really looking forward to it.
For the environment as well. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I motion to approve this one.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay. B, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to enter into a lease agreement for a certain portion of the 17th Street Bridge right-of-way owned by the State of Florida Department of Transportation in the city of Vero Beach, Indian River County, Florida, providing for an effective date requested by the water and sewer director.
What this does is allow us, as well as the used sailing and the rowing association, to use part of the right-of-way of the Department of Transportation in order to move the boats and also to store some of the boats in there. The second resolution you will see is where we're granting back to the Department of Transportation to have access across our properties so they can get to and from their, their right-of-way as well. So it's sort of a intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the two parties.
Jim, how, how might this affect any future plans for that location?
Really, you're talking about the either side. It doesn't, has no more impact than what you're used sailing, being there right now. You could always terminate it.
You can?
Yes.
You'll be, you'll be having coming back a couple of license agreements for, we need to get this lease in place first from DOT. We will be bringing you back a couple license agreements for used sailing and for the rowing folks to be able to use it under our authority based on the lease.
But license agreements are revocable by the city.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. Council, any questions?
None.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Zidane?
We voting yes?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
C, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to convey to the State of Florida Department of Transportation an ingress and egress easement on city-owned real property located at its wastewater treatment plant at 1717th Street in the city of Vero Beach, Indian River County, Florida, providing for effective date requested by the water and sewer department.
Again, this just gives DOT access across our properties.
Council discussion. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay. City clerks matters, I just wanted to go over the openings that we have on some of our commissioning boards. On the code enforcement board, we have two alternate positions open. On the fire pension board, we have one full position open. On the historic preservation commission, we have one alternate position open, and on the tree beautification commission, we have one position open. Thank you.
And nobody, nobody, no applicants have, are we running out of people?
We need to find some people. Luckily, the boards have been able to meet. They still had a quorum, but it could be a tough situation, so...
A public service announcement, we need to have some people volunteer for some of these boards in the city so we can keep them going.
Here, you go run. Just a side, a side issue, or like, and maybe like a solution to that. We may want to, at some point, look and see whether some of these committees could be like combined into more than one thing, and then what you end up having is a slightly larger committee, and then you don't have an issue with having enough people for quorum and things like that. So...
It's an idea.
We may want to just look at consolidating. I mean, there's some things that probably fit together pretty well, but we just have to see what they would be. And one of the side benefit to that is if we're having attorneys go to make sure they're following the sunshine of all, it's one less, or two less, or three less. If we can consolidate a few committees, it's less legal time going there and the clerk having to go and take minutes of the meetings and stuff like that.
So you're saying we shouldn't do the trees and beautification with finance committee, probably?
No, but it might be like with historic preservation, or, or, there might be something, there, there may be some different ones that kind of fit together.
Hey, you know money grows on trees.
Ah, that's right.
That's a good point.
Okay, well, let's, thank you, Tammy. I'm sorry, we don't have anybody to fill those spots right now. Moving on to city council member matters. As you all know, we, this is actually going to be the last meeting where we have our current city attorney, Mr. Wayne Coment. He's retiring on January the 4th. Do I have that date right, sir?
11th.
11th?
Yep.
And so, as it happens, we will not have, at our next me, at our next scheduled meeting, we will not have a city attorney. Now, currently, we have several applications that we've asked to be presented to us. And thank you for getting those compiled for us. In the, in the interim, I wanna propose a suggestion. Kira Hauntz has been someone who has been with us now for, I believe, about two years. And in my best estimation, she's shown that she's very capable of following the, the rule of law and following the way in which things are supposed to be done in a professional manner. I would like to put the idea and propose that we hire, in place of Mr. Coment, we hire Kira Hauntz for a period, a trial period of 90 days and see if perhaps we may want to keep her on as the lead attorney.
I support that.
Thank you.
What, what has typically happened in the past is the council would appoint someone as an interim.
So, we'll call her interim.
Well, it's up to the council, but-
You don't want to have to talk about firing somebody. I don't think you wanna have to do that, really. Is that what it's called, interim?
Right. It would be interim in the, until we determine who our city attorney is and it may, it could potentially be her, it could be someone else while we're going through the process.
How many applications did we receive, if you know?
Six, I believe.
We have six applications and-
I know, I was, I was called acting for 14 months, so.
Okay.
I think it's important to have an interim, but I, again, we need to look at the other applicants as well.
Sure. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I just think that we have someone that I find competent in-house in putting her on as the interim.
Yeah, you need to have somebody sitting here on June-
Oh, amen. For continuity, someone who knows our city.
That's right. And we, and we may find that she's a great fit and fantastic. If that's the case, great. But as it stands today, we are going to be without a sitting attorney at the next meeting.
And I think we can't do without an attorney available.
That's right.
Laura would say follow law.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do, so, does that require a motion right now? I'm sure it does to appoint a city attorney.
Can I propose a motion now? Or is it too late?
It's de facto, right?
It's not really de facto, I think.
Well, somebody would be sitting in this seat, that's for sure.
How about we just make a motion that Kira Hauntz become interim city attorney pending our final decision?
Sure.
Why don't I suggest this? Again, you can do what you want, but I can make sure that she is here on your next meeting, January 15th, and you could do that at that time. Obviously, you might wanna hear-
Make the motion at that time?
Yeah. You might want to hear from her that she's willing to accept that responsibility.
Did she, is she one of the applicants for-
She did apply.
Well, I think she would probably take that.
Why don't we just do it now?
Yeah, let's do it.
I'm sorry, what are we doing?
We'll make a motion that she be our interim attorney.
Okay.
Lead attorney. And I, I think it's, it wouldn't be out of question to say, you know, let's, let's give her a 90-day period. And if longer, if we need review other applicants longer than that, then, then longer, but let's, I'm-
Well, just be careful. If you didn't learn anything else tonight, you learned don't hurt a girl's feelings, except, except mine. All fan game. But these other girls, look at the flowers there, all right?
Let's make this simple.
Be very careful.
I will make a motion that we appoint Kira Hauntz as our interim city attorney until such a time as we officially hire a new city attorney.
Perfect. Fine, I'll second that. And let's, let's, do we have to roll call?
Yeah.
Sure.
Let's do a roll call.
Dr. Zidans?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Pass this five to zero.
That's my matters for tonight.
All right. First of all, I want to congratulate the city and everyone involved for the Christmas parade this year. Thought it was fantastic, one of the, one of the best we've ever had. And I also wanted to bring up a topic that I know we all love. It's season. We still haven't done anything with parking. And I know that I've had some, some discussions and I'm hoping that we can put it on the agenda for next meeting and really look at some solutions and implement something. So, I, I would just challenge us all again to, to try and come up with something to bring to the table that's gonna help alleviate, I mean, we, we have, other than switching around the times, we've not been able to do anything, so.
Go, go get that money tree you were talking about.
That's, I'm looking for it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May wanna back up just one vote. You may wanna make that appointment effective January 12th?
Oh.
I told you to watch out for feelings, didn't I tell you to watch out for people's feelings?
I had to have a minute to think about it.
So, we, we probably need to, can we just amend the motion or do we need to-
I just, make a motion-
Sorry, Wayne. Sorry, Wayne.
Just make the motion to amend the appointment effective January 12th.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend the motion to-
Well, not the motion, just the appointment.
I will make a motion to make-
Amend the appointment.
To amend the appointment for Kira Hauntz effective January 12th.
I will second that. Roll, let's do another, since we did roll call for-
Dr. Zidans?
Yes.
I'm going no this time, no.
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Boy, you got it.
We got rid of Wayne. Sorry, Wayne.
I told you I could stay awhile.
Councilmember Moss.
Yes, thank you. We will be meeting, the next, the next meeting, I think, is January 15th, if I remember correctly. So, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and to everyone who's celebrated Hanukkah, which is now over, I hope that it was a happy one. And the only other thing I have is last weekend was the opening of a new museum in Felsmere, which is dedicated to the United States Merchant Marine and the, it's, the acronym is NAG. It's Naval Armed Guard. And these people are unsung heroes during World War II and to this day. I mean, they have been very courageous. Many died in battle, very high casualty rates, protecting our fleets. They served a very important role. The museum is, is beautiful. I received a special invitation because my father was a member of the first graduating class, and that was in 1950, of what he affectionately called Kings Point, which is the United States Merchant Marine Academy. And, and for those who might not be familiar with it, it, the merchant, Kings Point is to the Merchant Marine what West Point is to the Army. As I said, they're, they're unsung heroes, all of them, all of them. So, if anyone, they are looking for artifacts, by the way, if there's anyone in the community who has served in the Merchant Marine or in the Naval Armed Guard. I will be going through some of my father's things to see if I can donate to the museum. I'm wearing my father's pin tonight. Very proud to wear, he, he was so proud of, of Kings Point. In fact, in place of a tombstone when he died, all he wanted was a plaque. They have a beautiful memorial garden at Kings Point, which is on Long Island. It's located on the former Chrysler Estate on sweeping bluff overlooking Long Island Sound. And that's what he wanted. He just wanted to be remembered there. That's how much he loved it. So, if anyone out there has, has artifacts, memorabilia of any kind, of relatives, or, or you have something yourself, they are looking for donations to the museum. But it's, it's quite an interesting place and I highly recommend it. This is in Felsmere, Merchant Marine Museum and the Naval Armed Guard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Young.
Just to echo what Congresswoman, Congresswoman, I don't, I don't, promoted each other.
Got promoted.
Said, there's a couple individuals out on Memorial Island. They were merchant, well, were Navy armed guards. And so, they provided a vital service. And one of the counts was speaking of the U boats that were following, that they literally fought off to prevent the merchant vessel from being torpedoed. And so, they, they played a vital role in that. Also, I wanna make note of a couple of newspapers and all that have really helped us out for the centennial. The Vero Beach News Weekly, if you looked at this week, mentions a boat parade on Saturday. So, please, if you have the opportunity on Saturday, that'll be a spectacular event. Take advantage of that. Also, in the fact that we won't convene again till the 15th of January, take advantage of the New Year's celebration at the Heritage Center. That's a VIP, big bash, and it should be incredible. Also, Main Street Vero Beach has a New Year's celebration that will be free of charge, which will be a joy. And the Vero Ballet has got a quintessential Vero ballet. Instead of the mice running around, it'll be fiddler crabs, I guess, and manatees. So, that's important. And I was delighted to learn this, but the Florida Catholic Paper had an article on the, the Centennial Tryst dedication along with St. Helens. So, that's, that's kind of special. And the 21st to the 23rd of December, our own Eric Minjer will have his railroad display out at McKee Jungle Gardens with the lights, et cetera. So, that's a blast. Take, take advantage of that. And-
Could you thank Eric for Santa at the airport?
No, no.
And his sister Heidi for the Christmas carols? Are you gonna do that?
Thank you for reminding me, Eric. He did wonderfully out at the airfield. And the mayor actually, actually wore his, his Christmas breeches. And it was a phenomenal event out there. And also, I happened upon this, this item that is to segue the, the city attorney out of here. So, Mr. Coment, if you would pick up this little knickknack that's moving its way down there. It's, it's a thank you from all of usons to you for your service and dedication to this wonderful town of ours. And it did come from John Michael Matthews and it may have something to do with the holiday season. It may have something to do with our centennial as well. And it doesn't, and it doesn't tick.
That's right. That's a good thing.
I think it's money.
Okay. So, so that's there. And again, for everybody who's still with us, God bless you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and have a joyful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Councilman Zidans? I just wanted to recognize two people who work for the city. The, our city manager, I, just since I've been on city council, people sort of contact me all the time and say, "The street light's out over here," or something else. So, like, just in, since the last time we met, we, I had one which was a, some streetlights which were out in Riemar Bay too, or somewhere around there. Both of the bridges, if you noticed, there's no debris on both of the bridges. So, they, someone had requested that we do something about that. They're worried about bikers. There's like grass growing in all the grates and stuff like that. So, that all got sprayed and cleaned off. And there's, there's new, new debris out. It doesn't take very long to get some new stuff out there, but for a brief period there, there was nothing. And it still looks really nice. Our bridges look nicer and that reflects on our city. And I just say thank you. And it's not, I know you didn't go out and pull the weeds, so there's other people in our city who obviously responded when you talked to them and when I passed along to you.
Thank you very much. And we do have a very responsive organization and we do have some guys. You're right, I don't pull the weeds. The people who know people pull the weeds.
And then the other one was recently in the neighborhood around where I live, there was a, there was someone who was concerning some of the citizens and it was on the Next Door app. And the gentleman, the, the guy had been arrested before in the nearby neighborhood and stuff. And our, and he had gone in and disrupted some of the businesses and had some trespass. And it was, he was just creating some problems. And our chief of police and our police department actually found someone who was a relative who lived in, you know, 45 minutes away, gave him a ride there and kind of made our neighborhood safer. So, I just wanted to recognize our police department for doing that as well. And then lastly, I just wanna say Merry Christmas, everybody.
And before you adjourn, if I could say thank you. And it's been many years of enjoyment. It's more fun as an assistant, though, but thank you. It's been a real hoot.
Thanks for your service to the city. Thanks, Wayne. Enjoy-
Thank you.
Enjoy retirement.
I'll still be around.
Yeah. Mr. Johansson, before I adjourn, I've noticed you've sat there all night long.
Yes, sir.
Did you wanna say something before we do?
I'd love to, but I'll keep it short.
Sure.
Mike Johansson, I'm just as hungry as the rest of you, I promise. Let me be sure I understand. In spite of all the citizens and residents that you've heard campaigning against the lease of the marina, as far as I know, the council's direction to Mr. O'Connor, who's a very busy guy, is to go ahead and prepare the RFP for the lease of the management and/or the management and the marina for release in February with a two-month waiting period while they prepare responses and spend their corporate dollars for a March-April submission, maybe a June award. And now, we're into next boating season. And you heard from Mr. Drewitt, who is an acknowledge expert in this area, that we could fix this right now. So, so let me confirm, without putting anybody on the spot, that as far, Jim, as far as you're concerned, that's still your guidance, is to prepare that RFP and release it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right.
But I, I think that the timeframes, I hope that's not the timeframe that I understood. It was you were, this is gonna be going out in January with either a 45 to 60-day response. Is that-
A response time, yes.
Yeah, so we're talking about mid-March to make a decision. And we're, we're in the middle of December.
May-June. So, an award in the, in the summer. If that's the way the council wants to go.
Well, his, Mr., and I would just say, Mr. Drewitt's, Drewitt or Drewit?
Drewit.
Drewit, I'm sorry. His proposal was only, was that we spend $100,000 on fixing things up. Based on our experience with a single restroom costing $150,000 or something like that, we're not gonna even touch anything over there for $100,000. So, that, that was his only short-term recommendation.
Well, his short-term recommendation, if you go through his summary slides with it, was that the city keep the marina.
No, I, I, yeah, that part I understood.
Okay. All right. As long as you understood that.
Right. But in any event, either way, I don't think we're gonna have any capital improvement projects or any kind of major things happen.
Well, I, I think what he's asking is would we, would we withdraw the direction to the city manager? I didn't want it in the first place.
It would make a lot of us very happy if that were the case, but-
You know, just withdraw the instruction.
Certainly your decision.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the city running it. I don't need to do RFPs for anything. I didn't need to do it last August. It's a matter of public record. In fact, it's uploaded on this agenda. And I don't need to do it now. But that was a four-to-one vote. I was the only one who voted against it at that time, last August. So, I don't know if that's changed. But has it changed?
Well, we've been through the discussion already tonight, so.
All right. Thank you.
I guess that means it hasn't changed. But thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, seeing that we're all done here, our meeting is-
I wanna announce that, that the school board did approve the fiber-
Make that announcement.
So, we're getting step by step toward Monday. This was the Fiber Connections 2 FPL vote. And it's a three-party group, the city, the county, and the school board. And the school board was the last to vote on it tonight, so.
So, excellent.
Two major steps today.
Excellent, excellent news.
That's a good thing, Senator.
Yeah.
We're starting work on Monday.
And thank you, thank you for that, Mr. O'Connor. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, guys.
Merry Christmas.